Here we go. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee for November 18th. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Dias.
Here.
Mr. Corey. Ms. Larve. Ms. Pereira.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Agia.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the recognition awards, which is number three, to number two on the agenda today and moving forward.
Oh, Mr. Agia, one question. I agree with you 200 percent. Can we also move up the student comment, number six, at the same time before we go to citizens input? Both of those.
Absolutely. But I would like it so that it's every meeting. We don't have to keep making the motion. Makes sense.
Okay. Makes sense. Alright, so we're gonna take two. We're gonna go, hold two and go to the recognitions awards first. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has designated this award for academic excellence. I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent.
Can I get a do a roll call?
Oh, we have to do a roll call on a flip in?
Ms. Dragu.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Ms. Larve. Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Are we going down?
We're gonna go down front.
Yes.
The superintendent's academic excellence awards are given annually to high school students across the state who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. This year, we have three outstanding students to recognize. Katerina Rumsey is a remarkable, well-rounded young woman. She is the number one student in Durfee's senior class. She has consistently demonstrated an extraordinary level of academic excellence and personal character throughout her high school years. Katerina earned nothing short of an A-plus in every class she took during her junior year. This included eight advanced placement classes, for which on AP exams, she scored a five on all but one. This academic record reflects her dedication, intelligence, and unwavering commitment to her education. Her intellectual curiosity is endless, and she consistently seeks to challenge herself. As a participant in a two-week pre-college program at the University of Notre Dame, Katerina enjoyed learning at a collegiate level, which has further prepared her for the rigors of her higher education. In addition to her academic achievements, Katerina is a dedicated three-sport athlete, and has seamlessly balanced her commitment to athletics with her academic responsibilities. Beyond sports, she is an advanced piano player and volunteers her musical talents at Charlton Memorial Hospital. It is also worth mentioning that Katerina is a triplet, and the friendly competition between them drives each other to strive for excellence. Despite this competitive spirit, Katerina is kind and supportive of her siblings and her peers. She has applied early decision to Georgetown University, where she hopes to continue achieve greatness in all her endeavors. Katerina Rumsey. Casey Juarez is the eighth-ranked student in the senior class. She has consistently demonstrated academic excellence, resilience, and an inspiring drive towards success. She is a first-generation college-bound student whose academic record consists of high-level rigorous courses. She will have taken 12 advanced placement courses by the time she graduates. Casey has a passion for the sciences, particularly chemistry, which was apparent in her academic performance in AP Chemistry, the most challenging AP course offered at Durfee. She is especially proud of earning qualifying scores on all of her AP exams to date, a testament not only to her intellect, but her unwavering commitment to her education. She further is the recipient of a National Recognition Award from the College Board. Beyond her academic strengths, Casey is known for her kindness, humor, and positive attitude, qualities that make her well-liked by her peers and teachers. She has a natural ability to connect with others. She is mature and independent. She has applied early decision to Columbia University, where she hopes to pursue a degree in biochemistry in pursuit of a future career as a neuroradiologist. Casey Juarez. Jacob Anderson is a respectable, kind, hard-working student who is incredibly dedicated to his studies. By the end of his high school career, he will have taken eight advanced placement courses, earning As or higher in all of them. His hard work and determination have certainly paid off for him, as he currently ranks 17th out of the class of almost 600 students and holds a 4.7 GPA. Over the past four years, Jacob has recently, has really started to come out of his shell and flourish into an incredible young man. His love for math and engineering are very obvious, not only from his course selection and grades, but from his remarkable ability to tackle complex problems with efficiency and precision. He has been a key member of our honors engineering CTE program, and has taken on leadership roles inside and outside of the classroom. Within the classroom setting, Jacob's classmates would describe him as ambitious, curious, hard-working, and astute. He is always willing to lead group projects and assist fellow peers with challenging coursework that he has been able to master. Outside of the classroom, he has been involved in a number of extracurricular activities, including the French Club, Marine Biology Club, Interact Club, and a member of our National Honor Society. Most recently, Jacob was nominated to the Career Technology Education Leadership Council, which will give him the opportunity to represent the engineering pathway, to voice about the progress that has been made and concerns moving forward. Jacob is also an avid chess player. The game has taught him crucial skills such as strategic planning, imaginative problem-solving, and resilience to face setbacks. Anyone who has been able to know Jacob over the years has been lucky enough not only to witness his greatness, but also his transformation into a confident young man that commands respect from his peers and teachers alike. His intellectual curiosity, strong work ethic, and leadership qualities position him as an outstanding candidate for any computer engineering at the college level. Jacob Anderson. The next award is the College Board National Recognition Award. It is a national academic honor granted to the highest-achieving students from underrepresented student groups in higher education. This award recognizes students for their outstanding academic performance and provides them with an opportunity to access a range of scholarships, college admissions opportunities, and other benefits. To be considered for the National Recognition Award, students must meet several criteria. They must have a GPA of a B-plus or higher at the time they are submitting, weighted and unweighted GPAs are considered. They must identify as Black, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, Indigenous, Native, first-generation college student, or attend a high school in a rural area or small town. They must be in the top 10% among PSAT 10 and PSAT NMSQT takers, test takers, in the 11th grade in their state, or have received a three or higher score on at least two distinct AP exams by the end of 10th grade. The College Board National Recognition Award is an excellent way to gain recognition for students' hard work, and it helps to open doors to additional academic and financial opportunities. We are so proud of our hilltoppers for earning this prestigious national award. We have multiple awardees, and I will call them down as a group, with time in between, so they can all have their moment. The first is Nita Azimi. Peyton Kedoo. Madison Ferreira. Casey Juarez. Owen Moniz. And Jason Pires. Jules Potter. Cheyenne Raposo. And Angel Rosario. We had one additional student who could not be with us this evening, Israel Lema.
I almost did, like, I was at my house, and for some reason, right before I left, I went, "We didn't." It said "COS," but it was like last night, it quit.
Next up is the student delegate report. First up is Brooke Tobicas from Durfee.
So, our teachers just, as of this, as of last week, they started a secret spirit week, and it's been really nice to see them and our security guards getting involved and showing some school spirit. It's a nice surprise for all the students. And then, this week, we're starting our spirit week, which will lead up to our pep rally next week. Yeah. That's all my updates.
Thank you, Brooke. Next up from RPA, Navea Aquendo.
Okay, hi, guys. Okay, so today, we were just gonna let you know some of the activities we have planned at RPA throughout the months of October through December. We have a chocolate fundraising that varied from $1 to $2, and a movie night, a Hispanic lunch, breakfast for students, so all the students feel more heard and paid attention to. During these events, we've also had volunteering, churches making lezania for families in need, and so far during November, we have had a pajama punch paint night, and a girl and boy ch, um, school coun, student council meeting to place Level 99, a field trip. And we're volunteering again at the church to bag food for families in need. We are starting a book year club, a yearbook club, December 3rd, and after-school activities to make ornaments December 11th. And that's all we have so far. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. We appreciate the updates. Next up is citizens input. First up is Kayla Moniz, Globe Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please, Kayla.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Kayla Moniz, and I am currently a special education teacher for social emotional.
Excuse me, Kayla, could you please use the microphone a little bit closer?
Sorry. Okay. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Kayla Moniz, and I am currently a special education teacher for social-emotional learners in a sub-separate setting. I have been a part of the Fall River Public Schools for 10 years now, following in my mother's footsteps, who was also a special educator in Fall River Public Schools for over 20 years before her tragic passing. One thing that I have always remembered from her passing was the love and support that the public community showed by offering condolences, stories of her days as an educator, and support for my siblings and I. I had never been so proud to be part of a dedicated, hard-working, and caring community. A lot of the teachers that have worked with my mother or myself have now moved on, either to early retirement or new communities. Nowadays, there is less admiration and respect for what a teacher does, and it's time to change that. And that change can begin with you. It is time to not only show us, but the families of the community, that you respect and appreciate everything that we do by giving us a livable wage. I am also a single mom to two wonderful children who also attend the Fall River Public Schools. They have also witnessed some of really great teachers move on. When this happens, they turn to me to look for answers as to why. I have to tell them that they are making decisions to provide for their own families. Years ago, I made the decision to go back to school and attain my masters in education in order to pursue something I love and secure a future for my own children. Now, I'm not so sure what that looks like. Maybe you can take the time and explain to them why their mother cannot afford to make a livable wage when she is one of the many teachers who work so hard to create futures for not only her own children, but the children who live within the community. In fact, the next time you visit one of the schools, explain to all the children when, one day, the teacher that was not only taught them, but practically raised them, will no longer be here one day as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have two people together. Council Vice President Linda Pereira, and former chief of the fire department, John Lynch. Three minutes, please, guys.
Thank you, members of the school committee.
Good evening. As you already said, I'm John Lynch. I live at 612 South Main Street, Fall River, Mass, lifelong resident of Fall River, and a proud member of the greatest class ever to come out of Durfee High School, which was 1975. I'll run you for your money. Lyndra and myself are here representing the George Sneaker McDonald and Evelyn McDonald Memorial Monument Fund. We erected a monument at Lafayette Park in their memory, and he was so well-loved and respected by everybody in Fall River, that the funds that we raised far exceeded what we needed to build the monument. So, as a result, the committee, which consisted of Lyndra, myself, Don Roach, Tom Chase, Chuck Tebow, and Mike Herron, decided that we were gonna take the funds that were left over and donate them to certain causes. And one of the causes, we want to give a scholarship in the amount of $1,500 to the Durfee Scholarship Fund. So, we're hoping that you will approve of this tonight. And, you have anything else to say?
Just that it has to be for somebody who plays baseball because of his baseball.
Yeah. So, we are hoping that this scholarship is given to a baseball player from Durfee, because George and Evelyn were so involved in baseball in Fall River, that we'd like to see that scholarship divided up, if you want to, or to one person, but somebody that played baseball and is fair to their education.
Well, thank you very, very much. That's very generous.
The committee leaves it up to members of the scholarship committee whether you want to do three $500 ones, two $750 ones, or a $1,500 one. But thank you so much, and the committee was really glad and happy that we were able to do this, and we really feel that George and Sneak, Sneaker McDonald and Evelyn never had children, but a couple that did so much for the children in our community. So, with our good wishes, that it goes to someone worthy of it. Thank you all, and I hope that it's approved this evening. Thank you.
No, I just, um...
Mr. Corey?
I just wanted to say, I played under Sneaker, and there were some of the most joyful days of my life as a teenager. How supportive he was. He was also a neighbor and a dear friend. God bless him and his wife, and thank you for your work on this. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The other thing that we would like to see happen, whoever you give the scholarship or scholarships to, if you could bring them down to Lafayette Park, to his memorial, and take a picture there, and just explain to them, committee man Corey, about Sneaker and his impact on the youth of Fall River. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'll need a motion to waive the rules. Is there from New Bedford?
Mr. Mayor, as we discussed at the last meeting, we don't have a rule with a residency requirement, so I would make the argument, it's not, it's not necessary to make a motion anymore.
Is that so, Bruce? We'll continue with it tonight, Colin, and if you're right, we'll definitely correct it by next meeting. I'll need a motion to waive the rules?
Second.
I have Bobby and Colin all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, Sarah Lemieux, Terry Lane, New Bedford.
Hello, I'm Sarah Lemieux, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of my colleague, Crystal Martinez. Good evening, members of the school committee and Mayor Coogan. My name is Crystal Martinez, and I'm a 20-year veteran of the Fall River School Department. I wrote this letter to tell you about the effects teacher retention has not only had on our students, but on our veteran staff as well. I have worked within the walls of Viveras Elementary since its doors opened 15 years ago. I've had the opportunity to grow as a young educator, surrounded by veteran teachers with a plethora of knowledge. In the early years of my career, I was part of a teaching and learning community that was consistent and returned year after year. As retirements grew, positions were posted and filled. Unfortunately, for many of us, the COVID year was a pivotal year financially and emotionally, and soon affected students behaviorally. For the staff at Viveras, we were stripped of our extended-day grant, leaving us to return to work with 30% less pay, students with decreased learning gaps, and social-emotional delays like we have never seen before. Within the past four years, the teacher retention rate has decreased, and many of our veteran teachers are leaving our district where they offer livable wages and an incentive for longevity. As for myself, I've been offered many positions from other districts. My heart has kept me here in Fall River, and I have been fortunate to have developed incredible relationships with my students, families, my administration, and my colleagues. But after this past school year, my entire team left Fall River altogether. I personally have resigned from being a teacher leader, because my mental health could not continue to be put on the back burner and try to prepare a whole new team to teach in this community. As a single mother, losing my extended-day pay and having to choose my stipend for teacher leader over my mental health has weighed heavily on my financial standings. I, like many of my colleagues, have dedicated time and used personal money to create a loving and inclusive environment for all of our students. All of the holes and no's on the school committee has responded to our bargaining team demonstrates that you do not see the value in our veteran staff. The new teacher turnover rate demonstrates that we have veteran teachers, that we veteran teachers are indispensable, and should not only be respected, but valued for our immense skills and dedication to educating the youth of Fall River. But at some point, veteran teachers like myself have to make the best financial decisions to be the best versions of ourselves for our own family. If the day comes that I leave this district to make sure I can provide for my own child, I want every student I have ever taught to remember, "You are capable, you are worthy, you are special, and you are loved. Love always, Ms. Martinez." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'll need a motion to waive the rules. Is the speaker from Westport? Oh, is that you?
Yeah.
Yo, Malia Martinez? Alright, Malia, three minutes, please. Thank you. Oh, well, hold on a minute. We're gonna get the vote. I got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Go ahead, Malia.
Good evening. My name is Malia Martinez. I am the daughter of Crystal Martinez. My mom is a kindergarten teacher at the Viveras Elementary School. I am here tonight to tell you my perspective on, of my mother as a teacher. Every day, my mom goes to work excited to see her students with the love and care every teacher should have. Every night, my mom tells me stories about her kids, and she smiles and says how much she loves them. My mom takes homework every night and weekends to make sure these children have a good education. My mom loves the students of Fall River so much, she plans family events at her school and even coaches the Viveras girls' basketball team. My mom chooses to work in Fall River because she loves this community, but my mom... But my mom also loves me, and her number-one job is to provide what is best for me. My mom deserves livable wages, just like all the other teachers in the Commonwealth deserves.
I'll need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker, is there from Tiverton?
Motion.
Second. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Kim Sutherland, Forey Avenue, Tiverton. I hope that's right.
This is very unfair that I have to follow Ms. Martinez. I am Kim Sutherland, and I'm proud to be a special education inclusion teacher at Fonseca Elementary. This is my 30th year in special education. 23 of those years have been in Fall River. So I've seen many contracts come and go over the course of my career, and I have an understanding of how negotiations can often be tense, as all parties have wants and needs that require vetting, active listening, and collaboration. One constant that I've noticed during each contract negotiation is the assertions that the money isn't there and we'll make it up to you next time. However, that there has not truly been a next time in Fall River. The FREA has accepted years of 0%, .5%, and generally no more than 2.5% salary increases in the vast majority of contracts during my time here in Fall River. And this contract should be the time when the city is making it up to us. The funding is there, and I believe that your negotiating team learned that during a recent finance meeting. In 2020 in the city, the per pupil spending was $13,524. This year, the budgeted per pupil spending is $19,549. The new funding formula is helping our district. It's been three months since you've made a proposal on compensation, and two months since FREA's counterproposal, and since then, it's been crickets. So my colleagues and I, highly educated, highly qualified, are here again begging for our supper. Meet us somewhere in the middle. Why does it need to be this difficult? The writing's on the wall. We have multiple teacher vacancies. HR is a revolving door, and teaching is hard enough these days without having to beg and plead for pay commensurate with our experience. You've rejected our request for educator autonomy within established guidelines. This tells me that although we're highly educated and highly qualified, the district does not consider that we can be trusted to make professional decisions. In what other profession is this acceptable? None. So we come to these school committee meetings to ask you to give a little and are rewarded with platitudes like, "Remember your why." Would I guarantee you that there's not one educator in this room who has forgotten that they chose this profession in this small, culturally rich, but challenging, small city because their why is front and center every single day and every night in their minds? Remember your why is what spin doctors use to justify poor compensation and/or treatment, and it's insulting. Or we may be mocked for not having more members present at school committee meetings when you know that many of our younger and/or newer teachers are working second jobs. Many of us have children at home to raise or in night classes to earn that required masters. As for those of us who are here, which in past months have included at least two FREA members who are on maternity leave, which I find extraordinary, I ask you to take a look at the audience tonight. There are teachers in this room who are right now writing lesson plans on their laptops or doing homework towards their advanced degrees, but they wanted to be here, and there's no way to add hours to a day. Last month, I counted five teachers doing that exact same thing just in the vicinity of where I was sitting. I know you see it. I hope you understand it. If you don't, I hope you'll come to one of our schools and spend the day, see what it means to teach in Fall River and to take care of our 10,000 children. Shout out a teacher, talk to kids, talk to staff, and for the love of all that is good and decent, please stop telling teachers that there could be legal ramifications to leaving at the contractual dismissal time.
That's three minutes.
Motion to waive the rules?
Actions...
That's three minutes.
Pardon?
That's three minutes.
Okay. It shouldn't be difficult for us to find common ground. I understand as committee members, you're not required to attend bargaining sessions, but I am asking you to please consider attending the next bargaining meeting so you can hear the negotiations firsthand. I know you have other obligations, and time is precious for you and for us, and we're all tired. But we're not going away. This is important, and it's important for our new teachers to feel like their efforts are valued and to know that this district supports its employees with competitive wages and fair working conditions, and that they have a professional home here. It's important for more seasoned teachers like myself to know that our contributions to the district are appreciated, and that when the time for retirement comes, we're leaving with a pension that reflects a respect for the loyalty and solid service we provided to the profession and to the city.
Okay, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Next up? Next up, Philip Ross, Keely Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please, Phil. Thank you.
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I am a teacher at Durfee High School, I'm not speaking to this committee tonight as a teacher. And while I am a parent of a Durfee High School student, I'm not here in that capacity either. I'm here simply as voter. I do live in Fall River, and while I am not a lifelong resident, my wife and I have chosen to live in Fall River and have done so for the past 20 years. Therefore, I'm also speaking as a homeowner and a taxpayer. I'm wondering why we're here again this evening. Surely, this contract could have been settled by now. I cannot help but wonder, is the school committee's negotiating team dragging their feet, trying to wait out the union? To my mind, that would be not bargaining in good faith, and I hope that's not the case. As I teach my students, and I'm sure you're all aware, we live in a representative democracy. And in a democracy, it's the people, these people, who ultimately hold the power. Also, in a representative democracy, you all represent myself and represent many of us. Therefore, my message to the school committee tonight is very simple. Represent us, work with the union, negotiate this contract. Because while I am a parent, and I am a taxpayer, and I am a teacher, I'm also a voter, and any authority that this committee has is given to you by these people, these people. So let's get the job done.
I'll need a motion to waive the rules. Is the next speaker from East Providence?
Still moved.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Keith Machan, Tryon Avenue, East Providence.
Good evening. I'm Keith Machan, president of the Fall River Educators Association. All right, not too long. I got a short time. Last month, we delivered over 800 petitions for our members showing support for the bargaining team's position. That's not a vote that Mayor Coogan asked for, but I hope it was clear that the members don't accept the committee's current offer. At that time, Mr. Aguirre dismissed the petitions, asking if there was $9 million in the box, insinuating that that amount of money was needed to meet our demands. For the edification of the public, that was inaccurate. At that time, the difference was about $8 million. After some more movement by us, I would say the difference is about $7.5 billion right now. It should also be noted that we're talking about $7, $8, $9 million over three years relative to an $800 million budget. It's no small amount of money, but we are in 1,000 miles apart. It should also be acknowledged that the educators have delivered financially for the city of Fall River. In addition to the many hours of unpaid labor and purchased materials, Fall River educators and educators across the Commonwealth have been strong advocates for fully funded schools. The educators contributed millions of dollars and countless hours in an effort to pass the Student Opportunity Act, which increased our funding by $65 million over the past four years, and I project at least another $50 million over the next three years. In addition to that, we committed our time and money to win the Fair Share Amendment, which brought an additional $2.1 billion to the state of Massachusetts for transportation and education. That amount is only expected to increase year after year, and Fall River is expected to see many of those dollars. Our current priorities include addressing the inflation glitch of the Chapter 70 funding formula, funding the transportation reimbursement lines in our state budget, addressing issues with Circuit Breaker, funding for special education, and funding our pre-K. I'm glad to see the committee's legislative program policy on the agenda tonight, and I hope that we can address these issues together. It's time to settle fair contracts for all the school department's bargaining units. Dragging this out when the district has never been in a better financial position is doing unnecessary harm. It's time for you to show the employees that they are valued and that we have a shared vision that they will buy into. This system doesn't run without them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
Can we get somebody that's on the bargaining team to respond to any of the allegations that were alleged here?
Just want to establish a couple of facts that you may or may not be aware of, and I'm talking right now to the committee. One is that the committee, the bargaining team, offered to the FREA and the MTA to have their financial people meet with our financial individual. That happened. As a matter of fact, my understanding is even the president of the MTA was present at that meeting. Meeting took place with our chief financial officer and also the superintendent of schools. Purpose of the meeting was to see what the resources were of our community and where the MTA and the FREA believed the money was available to fund their proposal. Their proposal right now is approximately $8 million more than what the school committee has offered. The school committee's offer is one of the very best in the state. And that, now, let me finish, please, let me finish.
Please, please, nobody interrupts.
And that is acknowledged by the president of your union when he states, "It is true that I've stated in negotiations and many other places that the school committee's proposal is a significant offer," specifically noting the salary offer. And he mentions about, as I have pointed out many times, percentage-wise, it is one of the best in the state. So that's not as... Please, please. I didn't interrupt anyone, and I hope you wouldn't interrupt us. We have put one of the very finest packages, cola packages, on the table in the state of Massachusetts. In addition to that, we've gone steps further. I have, on behalf of the school committee, offered to the FREA and the MTA on at least three occasions mediation to join with us for a petition with the DLR for mediation to have a trained mediator come into Fall River, sit down with the parties, and work out solutions that would resolve the issues we have. I can think of no logical reason why anyone who would want to settle a contract would not want the assistance and resources of the DLR and a trained mediator to resolve the issues. No one on this committee is dragging their feet. No one is dragging their feet. A significant offer had the MTA and the FREA finance teams meet with our finance teams, open up all our books to them again, and then offered mediation to have a trained individual come in to sit down and try to resolve matters, was rejected on every occasion by the MTA and the FREA. We're going to continue to negotiate, and we're going to continue to work to get a resolution of the contract with the FREA and the Fall River School Committee. But I implore the FREA and the MTA to work with us in terms of looking, number one, at a resolution, and secondly, about joining in a petition for a mediator to come into Fall River to help us get a resolution. We are not at an impasse, but we do need the assistance of someone to move this along. We are not holding it up. We're trying to expedite the matter and facilitate the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, I need a motion to waive the rules?
I'll make the motion.
I got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Justin Reposa, Justine Reposa, Colonial Road, Bristol.
I want to begin by apologizing for not being able to address you in person. Unfortunately, I am currently at my second job, which is a necessity for me to make ends meet despite holding a bachelor's degree. I have been with the district for four years, working specifically for the Special Education Department. My parents have always taught me to have a great work ethic and to follow my passions. My parents also taught me that I need to do my job right, or I shouldn't be doing it at all, which is why it saddens me that despite our efforts and advocacy for a livable wage, you have failed to meet our needs and are keeping us from continuing to be in jobs in which we feel so passionately about. Myself and my fellow educators are frustrated. We want the best for our students here in Fall River, but without a proper salary adjustment, we have to weigh the odds of how much longer we can be in a district while being this underpaid in comparison to other districts. Fall River has become a stepping stone in new educators' careers. They stay here for a year so they get that time under their belt and move on to districts that pay more. We're losing incredible staff that love the students of Fall River because we can't afford to live. With all that, the people we are bargaining against obtain salaries of nearly double to triple of what we are currently making, but tell us they know how we're all feeling when in reality, they never could. I hope that this meeting tonight indicates the desire to provide your employees the rightful salaries that we deserve in order to do the hard and rewarding work of educating the young minds of Fall River.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is subcommittee updates. Tonight, we have a subcommittee update from our evaluation subcommittee, Shelley Pereira.
So the...
Hello, hello.
So the evaluation subcommittee met last week, and we discussed evaluating the superintendent because she was hired in July.
I'm going to take a two-minute recess. This is ridiculous.
Because she was hired in July, it shortens our reevaluation period. So we looked at adjusting the timeline as well as the evaluation process, and those will be presented tonight, I think the last two items on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley. Next up is item number five, the superintendent's report.
The first thing I want to talk about are some upcoming holiday events. In the coming month, we have many planned in the district and throughout the city, and tonight, I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight three of them in particular that really have become staples of the holiday season and benefit our students directly and tremendously. The first of these is the Winter Wonderland Holiday Wish fundraiser event that's scheduled for this Friday evening. It's at 6 o'clock at the Eagle Event Center. Every year, it's extremely well-attended, and it's an event that really brings joy to the entire community. Attendees include staff from every school in the district, as well as our partners in the community, and it's a wonderful way to kick off the holiday season. Even though the event is not a Fall River Public Schools event, the checks, if they are to be written, are made out to the Fall River Holiday Fund. The event is very special to us in that 100% of the proceeds benefit the Fall River Public School students, helping to provide them with gifts during the holiday season. Tickets are $40. They include appetizers and dinner and music and a dance floor. And I just, again, wanted to take an opportunity to encourage everyone, and especially our staff, to use this as an opportunity to make the holidays brighter for the children in our community. Any of the school principals or staff at our Parent and Community Engagement Center can help secure your seat. Another event I wanted to highlight that's upcoming and really special is on Saturday, December 7th, we have the Children's Holiday Parade. It's going to kick off from Kennedy Park at 12:30. It's one of the... It's one of the largest parades in the region and organized by the Holiday Parade Committee and the Greater Fall River Recreation. Again, it's an event made so special by the fact that all of our schools are represented in the parade, either on a decorated float or marching with their school banners. And of course, just like every parade, our National Champions Marching Band will be there as well. This is the 40th year of the parade and not one to miss, so if you're not marching, I want you to join thousands of people on the route for the sake of enjoyment and also to support our students in their schools. The last event is the Fall River Christmas in Fall River Concert. It's the sixth year for the event, and this year will feature some folks who might be household names. Madison Corbello, who was a finalist from season 25 of The Voice, will be joined by Javier Colon, the season one winner of The Voice. It's for a night of music to celebrate the season. It will be held at Durfee High School on December 20th at 6:30 in the auditorium at Durfee High School. Tickets are only $10. It could be a relatively inexpensive night, and again, thanks to sponsorship from a partner, Bristol County Savings, all of the proceeds will benefit our city's children, our students, through the Law Enforcement Assisting Families Annual Toy Drive, so we would love to see people get out for that. On a much more serious note, but no less joyful, we are in the middle of an AIR District Review. Basically, you know, we've been selected by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed for a comprehensive district review during the 24-25 school year. This review is facilitated by AIR, the American Institutes for Research, and is a really valuable opportunity for all of us to reflect on the district's progress and identifies ways to strengthen performance for both our staff and students. The idea is to provide actionable feedback to the district on our practices. The report that we receive will identify strengths and areas for improvement that are aligned with Massachusetts district standards, and it really fosters progress in leadership, instruction, student support, and operational systems. We're going to use feedback from this state report through AIR to inform the district's strategic plan over the next three to five years. So this week is the week for the review. We have interviews and focus groups happening in district departments and at schools. Instructional observations are happening across schools, and there's also an evaluation file review taking place where we have, there are educators and administrator evaluations are being reviewed. So to all of our staff and families and our students who are participating in focus groups this week, I just want to say thank you. The information and insights that you share will really provide us with some invaluable input, and the feedback from AIR will shape our collective future. So thank you for that. The last piece of my update is a hiring update. Since our last meeting, we've had 22 hires, 17 new and five rehires. Among the 17 new hires, we have one assistant wrestling coach, a guidance counselor, an LPN, eight paraprofessionals, one part-time custodian, one utility worker, one speech-language pathologist, and three teachers. And then among our five rehires, we have one construction craft laborer teacher, one educational team chair, one nurse, one speech-language pathologist, and one classroom teacher. At the same time, we've had 41 resignations, nine retirements, and 16 transfers within the district.
Mr. Mayor.
That's all.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I just have to, I have a question, a concern about the incident that happened at Durfee or around Durfee last week, I believe the 13th to the 15th, regarding the fights that took place, and I do have a couple of concerns. Superintendent's report, I just want to hear from the superintendent on the incident.
Is that okay, Bruce? It's not even on the agenda?
Well, you have the three items on the agenda, Holiday Activities, Hiring Update, and AIR District Review.
Mr. Chairman.
You can go, Mr. Aguirre.
Past practice has been that any events that happened over the last month that the superintendent reports on is fair game to be asked at a superintendent's report, and that's what we followed. Under the superintendent's report in the past, any information that's come back and forth, which Mr. Dias is bringing up, was an issue, is fair game to be asked in the past as past practice to the superintendent's report, even if she doesn't put that on.
Really? Yeah.
Just a few questions.
That's okay. So, you know, as a general update, I guess some of the things that I'd want to share is that there was an altercation after school, after Durfee High School let out. Over in the plaza, it was off-school campus. It involved multiple people in the community, Durfee students, RPA students, we had students from charter schools, and other people from Fall River. So I think the difficult part in all of this, I just want to say for everyone, is that it wasn't a school event, right? I think what I've, what I know to be true is that, and I'm going to steal some words from someone, one of my colleagues, is that for our students in Fall River and at Durfee High School, I feel very comfortable saying that our, our students, we see the best of them when they are in our school buildings, and I think that a school like Durfee, and just like many of our schools, has systems and structures and high expectations in place for students where we really are seeing the best of them, and we're supporting them to be the best. What happened outside of school certainly was, does feel like an extension of a school day, but it did happen after school hours. It was a community situation that took place, and we have obviously been collaborating with the police around their investigations, sharing what information that we have. We know that there were multiple arrests. I also want to report that I know there was a lot of concern around moving the game Friday night to Saturday afternoon, but, you know, given the experience of Thursday, you know, some of the kind of high-stress events of many of our students in the district being arrested Friday, some information that was coming in, coming in around kind of a possible extension of what had happened, I think the decision was a sound one, obviously, because I, you know, I had to make that decision, but I think it was sound. I think it had everybody's best interest in mind, and, you know, the great part is we were able to get out there on Saturday for an unbelievable football game. They won the game. It was just, that was also, even though, you know, kind of sponsored by Durfee High School, hosted by Durfee High School, that was a wonderful community event that hosted, you know, our families, families from another town, and it was just, you know, just a really fantastic event, and then students were able to then go to homecoming that evening, which by all accounts was a very positive experience as well.
Thank you. And I really do appreciate that, Superintendent. It's very important that the public's aware of that as well. The only two concerns that I have, which I raised prior in an email, I didn't receive a response yet, was the administration aware of any threat of like a firearm made towards students or the school?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And secondly, the only concern that I have that was brought to me by a parent, there was a communication that went out by the Durfee admin on the 15th, and pertinent, it said, "While this incident may not be directly, while this incident is not directly connected to our school community," I mean, I just didn't understand where that came from, and the parent didn't either, because it may or may not have been directly connected. It happened near Durfee High School, but the only comment, I will say, there's, we need to investigate the root causes and, you know, help these students and help the situation in any way that we can. I'll speak more of this in new business. I think we need to get our heads together, maybe form some sort of task force to look into the root causes, so I'll save that for new business, but we definitely need to do everything we can to address why this happened, understand why this happened, and figure out some solutions moving forward. I yield.
Yeah, I would, I would actually just propose, and I understand your, you know, wish for a task force, because it really will take a community. It will. I mean what I said about our students, for the most part, living up to very high expectations that we have in our schools, and it will take a community so that we can prevent events like that in our community. And not that we don't want to partner, we 100% want to partner.
So, to address?
She wasn't finished yet.
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, we want to partner with the community. We are part of the community, but I just want to make it clear that we need our partners as well.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Corey.
So, Mr. Dias, I'm a little bit concerned by the nature of your comments at this moment, because what you're doing is you're implicating the school, and only the school, but as a matter of fact, it's a shared concern with the community, with the businesses in the plaza, with the police, and with the school. It's a community effort. It's not just on the school, so I wanted to clarify that for the public's justification as well. I yield.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond quickly?
Mr. Dias.
No, and as I just said, it wasn't a concern. Again, I applaud the superintendent's response to the situation. I received concerns that there may have been firearm involved or threats of a firearm that weren't, that may or may not have been communicated, but again, if the administration wasn't aware, it's nothing the administration can do. If there ever is a threat of a firearm, that is definitely the public's justification to know. But again, that was just, that's why I brought up the issue, and again, I had a concern about the, I'm just responding to a complaint that was made directed at me. Again, it was just a comment on the section that went out towards the community saying, while it's not directly related to our school community, we don't know that, I just don't think it's fair that we say that. So I wanted to say, I wasn't throwing the school under the bus, but again, we have concerns of public safety. We need to address them and make sure we're doing the best for our students. I yield.
Mr. Bailey.
So, for me, myself, I do think it's a concern. I think it's a concern, and I don't think you're running from it when you say it's a concern of the school and the community, and we need to collaborate, but I think we also need to be careful when we're discussing some of these things in public, because we don't know if there's any open investigations on the police end. So I think we need to be very careful. I think it's great to have the conversation. I think we all know what happened, not directly, but I think it's also our job to help the schools and also, like I said, be careful what we're talking about on this stage, because we don't know who's involved, and we don't know if it's an open investigation, so I think we should tread lightly when we're discussing this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, just, I did witness some of the, we didn't get much information because it wasn't necessarily a school event, but I did watch the video of what happened, and it's totally ridiculous. And I'm not placing blame on anybody, but anybody that watches that video will say that's totally ridiculous. That behavior is unacceptable for anybody to do. So when we get a report that said there were 12 arrests, I don't know what those arrests are. Was anyone, my question would be, is anybody charged with a felony? I saw people getting kicked in the head while they're on the ground. If there's any students, in my opinion, that were charged with a felony, they shouldn't be in our schools, because that's the law that you can keep them out, because what I saw on that video was unacceptable anywhere, whether it's our kids or not. So all I would ask is that if somebody has a felony, that we tell them they're not coming back to school while you have a felony, because that's the law. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say something. As someone that was up there both Thursday and Friday, and have been over there when I was a vice principal a number of times for fights, that was not uncommon. What's changed is the video, which shows things. You have to remember that, as the superintendent said, these were not all Durfee kids. This was a provoked allegation from some outsiders coming over there for reasons, but I do, I know my colleague, Mr. Dias, you know, asks questions about weapons and stuff. It reminds me of the question that you ask people, is when did you stop beating your wife? That just inflames the situation. If you have knowledge of it, the only person he should be asking is the Fall River Police Department. He should be talking to them if he has knowledge of a weapon there. I was there both days. I didn't get that from anybody, and I talked to probably 10 or 12 policemen that were there, especially on Friday, so I'm kind of a little uneasy with comments like that in this day and age when people are on hypertension, whether it's from Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, whatever. If you have knowledge of anything like that, and I'm talking to the community, tell the Fall River Police Department. They were out there in force both days. This thing exploded in our lap, as many of the fights do in schools across the country, but we can't respond to somebody's whims on Facebook or someone's making comments on Instagram. That's not how you police a city or you, or you police a school after a fight. Bobby Bailey and I were up there for a diamond game one night, and I didn't see anything. A ton, ton, ton of kids there, walking around milling, having fun, and that's what we want at our football games. It's unfortunate, this was a one-off, but I don't know if this was initiated by Durfee kids or some outside agents. The police are looking into it, and I say we let them do their job.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aguirre.
Just on that, so, for one, I don't think that we have the authority to call the police to ask them questions. As school committee, we pose our questions to Superintendent Curley. She can get those answers. I don't think you're trying to give us authority to call the police department and ask for information. I don't think that's what you mean, but what I would ask is, as we go through this process, we get a full report of exactly what happened, because clearly, we canceled a football game for a reason.
We postponed it.
Not just because there was an issue.
Postponed.
We postponed it for a reason. Let's not kid ourselves to think that there was no worry about violence and weapons. Let's not kid ourselves. There's a reason why that was canceled. Now, I'm glad it worked out. I'm glad the team won. I'm glad everything worked out, but let's not kid ourselves to think that there's not an issue relative to safety and weapons when we see what we saw there. That was ridiculous. That shouldn't be tolerated. Period. I yield.
Okay. I actually, I don't know what else you have on that for later, Mr. Dias. If you want to bring it up now while we're in the discussion, I'd like to just finish it up. I don't want to go back to something that negative again. If you have anything else you want to add, offer now.
Sure, if I may, well, just one thing, it's not, it's negative, but it's unfortunately negative, but it's important that we bring it up. I, and again, if something's on social media, or if it's said anywhere, it doesn't really matter, the medium, where it's from, if you see it, something that's bad, like a threat of a firearm, or it be from a scanner report or whatnot, I brought it to superintendent's attention. I brought it to the community's attention. That should be looked at. I heard from parents, that's what they heard as well. I don't think it's unreasonable just to bring it up, especially since I brought it up in an email. But I did hear the superintendent say she was looking possibly at some sort of task force, if that's...
No, I think you mentioned a task force, and I think that, I think, I'm just saying that if there's work to be done, whether via task force or whether there's work to be done, we do want to partner in it.
Sure, if there's, and to answer the mayor's question, if there's something we could do, working with our community partners and, you know, just finding out the root causes, maybe we can talk offline, maybe put something in subcommittee?
Is that a question for me?
No, it wasn't a question, it was a statement. We can just talk offline, do something in subcommittee. Yeah, so I won't bring anything up for new business tonight, so I'll yield.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dias. Next up, we have six sets of minutes. If anybody wants to hold or discuss any of them, I know you all reviewed them.
Motion to approve all.
Motion to approve all. I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Deb, please call the roll, and then I'll read the minutes so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Seven sets.
I'm sorry, seven sets. My mistake. Oh, missed the last one.
Who's second?
Go ahead. Mr. Corey.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The minutes we were talking about was the Parent Community Outreach Subcommittee Meeting, 8:19. Approval of the Regular School Committee, 9:09. The minutes of the Special Meeting of the School Committee, 9:30. Approval of the Minutes for the Special Education, Alternative Education, Early Childhood Subcommittee Meeting on 10:09. Approval of the Minutes Policy Subcommittee Meeting on 10:15. Minutes of the Special Meeting of the School Committee on 10:15, and finally, the Minutes of the Grievance Subcommittee on 10:29. Thank you. Item number eight is approval of travel requests. Again, we have a number of travel requests. Anyone have any questions on any of... Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, all travel requests. Any discussion on travel requests? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion on donations? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent Curley.
On behalf of the Fall River Public Schools, I request the acceptance of a $4,000 donation from the EOS Foundation. The donation is for eight schools, Laterno, Sylvia, Henry Lord Community School, Doran Community School, Fonsaga, Morton, Spencer Borden, and Viveris. Each school will receive $500. This donation will be spent at the discretion of each school's principal. And on behalf of Durfee Athletic Director Brad Buston, I request the acceptance of three $500 scholarship donations in the names of George and... I request the acceptance of three $500 scholarship donations in George, in the names of George and Evelyn McDonald. The donation is to be used for three Derfie High School seniors who play on this year's baseball team.
Very nice. Thank you. Item number 10 is the approval of grants. Again, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 grants. Does anybody want to hold on any of the seven, Mr. Dias?
Farver Opiate Settlement Fund.
Farver Opiate Settlement. Last one, any other holds on a grant? Mr. Corey?
Just idea part B and idea part C. First two.
First two, okay.
Three and four.
And you want to hold three and four, Mr. Corey?
Please.
All right, so the only one we're going to approve is 4, 3 and 4, 5 and 6. Open Psy Ed Grant and 2024 School Year Grant.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All right, why don't we vote on those two, please, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. So, why don't we start from the top with the IDEA Grants Part B first?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not looking to hold it up. I just want an explanation from Ms. Obenchain and Ms. Farias on the nature of these grants. I'm just curious to learn a little bit more about them. If I can ask Ms. Obenchain and Ms. Farias up at the podium. The first grant, Part B, that's a pretty sizable grant, so...
That is our entitlement grant for special education. So, we use that grant to fund some salaries, to fund a lot of the contracted partners that we have to support our teachers in their professional development. We use that for supplies in the classroom, just different, all things related to special education and building the best possible program we can for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Farias?
Sure. So, the other part is just a subset of the entitlement grant. There's a portion of the money that is set aside specifically for students ages three to five. So, that's why it's a significantly smaller amount of money, and that is similar to the 240 side of it, spent primarily on salary and then also some materials.
Those are federal grants. That's great. Thank you very much. I yield.
Mr. Agia.
Ms. Obenchain, do you think that if you were to predict, looking to the future, these grants are going to go up or are they going to go down?
Gosh, I wish I had a crystal ball, Mr. Agia, but...
I can give you my opinion, that they're going to go down.
So...
Based on the history of what's been happening in this government.
I second Mr. Agia's comment.
The only reason why I mention it is not, obviously, we're going to accept the grant and, you know, but when you look at it and you look at the details in there, you're paying for several teen chairs and, you're paying for services that are core, services to the kids in this district. That's a big number. When that number gets cut by the federal government, which we're probably going to have cuts across all of the federal government, what do we do with those people? That's a rhetorical question, of course. But I just think that we all need to know and be aware that we're going to get less money in the future than we're getting now. We're not going to get more. So, thank you. I yield.
I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Dias?
Fair, brief question through you to the superintendent. If we can just get like an update on what rely, like, what reliabilities and what support we get from the Department of Education? Because of everything that's being discussed, we should be prepared for, you know, certain cuts to the budget. I think the committee should be prepared for that ahead of time. So, maybe in the near future, we can just get an update on what we rely on from the Department of Education, maybe grant funding, certain curriculum, or just, I don't know the answer. Just anything, just so we're aware. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
B and C, Mr. Dias?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. On the first two, B and C, any further discussion on those two items? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Our next item was number three.
Just a brief question. Superintendent could probably answer this. Just for the green school. I'm wondering why we don't have them at others, or maybe we do and it's just not in this? Because we have 21st Century programs at other schools, but this one is specifically for the green? Did we have others, or is this just, no other ones are eligible?
Yeah, I'm not sure why there's just one. We do have other programs, so I'm not sure why this one is now.
Yes, I think this is, I think this is the exemplary grant, and it may just be that they were up at this time. And so, other schools might be up at a different time in the cycle.
Yeah, if you just look at, when I looked at the list, there was some from all different cities or whatever, and then it was, why would green be...
Yeah, we do have multiple sites that run 21st Century, and green is an exemplary site. And so, I know this is just where they're at in their, their cycle right now.
And I think there was a correction on the one I read by hand. It was 60,000 instead of 45?
It's, I believe it's 60,000. I believe it's 45,000 during the year and 15,000 to support summer programming.
Yep. But if we're accepting it as a grant, we should accept it as the factual amount.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it at 60 grand.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number three? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. The next one, Mr. Agia.
So, my question on the early child, early college, I've asked this question every year. I believe I've been told various answers. There's a stipend paid for administrators, and I've in the past indicated that I don't think that should be happening. But once again, it's before us with stipends for administrators. Looking for some info.
So, just to more specifically talk about what the stipends are paying for, that might answer your question. So, the early college support grant is an entitlement grant to support our early college program, and we award it 75,000. 65,000 of that 75,000 is for stipends. The majority of the stipends are, the entirety of the stipends are for direct and comprehensive support to stipend our educators on their prep periods, to support students either through their one-goal class, directed tutoring, or educators being a Derfie support teacher in a classroom that has a college professor. So, that's during periods five and six every single day at Derfie High School.
Can we just cut to the chase, please?
Yeah, so, the, the only administrator who's being stipended is the early college coordinator counselor, and that's if potentially there is a Saturday open house, and we're going to take a group of students to a college field trip. Or it could be after school. Sometimes we do tutoring hours where students can drop in and work on support, you know, after school hours. So, that's the administrator who's being stipended through this grant. The others are teachers or ISLs who are being paid to directly support students.
So, you try to, it says 150 hours each for administrators. Tell me why we don't have enough administrators at that high school to handle this? I just don't understand.
Anything for the administrators is for after-school hours, either weekend or evening or after school.
But the early college program isn't school?
During the school day. So, these are special field trips. If it's on the weekend. If it's after school, it's typically office hours, tutoring, where students can drop in after the school day is over.
So, you're paying administrators to do tutoring for after school? Is that what you're saying?
Teacher, teachers mainly.
Right, so I'm asking a question. It's not complicated. It says, you're paying two administrators, $40 an hour, 150 hours each, for $12,000. What is the administrators doing for that money? And I just don't understand it. I've brought this up every single year this comes up. We have over $2 million in administration at Derfie High School, and we have to pay a stipend to run this early college program? Now, you're saying something about after school, on the weekends, all this other stuff. That would mean that you got a stipend because you're chaperoning something, which would be a logical answer. But you got it listed here as $150. Now, I've said this over and over. It just seems like we in this district keep on paying stipends, stipends and stipends and more stipends. Maybe there's, somebody needs to give the message that we don't have the money that you all think that we continue to do, whether it's in grants or not. I don't understand. You've not given any information to me relative to why we need to pay. And I believe if we look back, I said the same thing last year, oh, and that was going to be addressed, or no administrators were in. I don't understand why we're paying administrators when we're paying administrators good money to work doing all the different things. We have administrators that deal with everything, and I'm one that stands up for those administrators and supports those people. But enough's enough already. I just don't get it. Every time I look, somebody else is getting a stipend in this district to do extra work, and it should be part of their regular job, in my opinion. So, I, I'm not going to be supporting this for that reason. Early college is something that we've always kind of debated, whether it's good, bad, or whatever. I'm for dual enrollment. I'm not for necessarily all this, but I'm not voting for this just for the administrative piece. I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. And just on the point of the stipends, because I also had that concern as well. I think the administration should look into, and I believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, your administration has done a good job at this, getting rid of stipends and just including everything within their job description. I, I think that's a similar approach that we should consider for the next budget season. Like my colleague, I won't support that for that reason as well. We should just have everything up, upfront and transparent, what you're going to do in your job description, not have all these extra stipends. Have it all within one. The city does it. Cities have been doing a good job at that, and we should follow that on the school side. I yield.
I yield.
Any further discussion on the early college support grant? Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
You do.
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table, and I have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Point of information, no discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you there, Dr. Dias. I appreciate it.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
No. The last one, I believe we only have one left. It's Mr. Dias's hold on the Farver Opiate Settlement Fund. Mr. Dias?
Thank you. If I, if I could ask Ms. Braunhardt, just for the public certification, just to give a brief presentation on what these funds are going to be used for?
Thank you, because last week, we didn't have a chance when it was on the agenda as a standing item alone. But the PASC program will, is an opioid-funded program that we were able to receive funds through a very competitive process at the city level, and the school department was afforded the opportunity to open this alternative-to-school suspension program in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, in addition to STAR Family Services as well, all providing therapeutic counseling, some proactive treatment assessments, as well as academic support, so that students that are potentially eligible for suspension at school, in lieu of being suspended and going home, they will be able to go to the PASC program at the Boys and Girls Club to have their day count, to receive services, not be suspended from school, not be marked absent from school, and then be provided the wraparound supports upon returning back to school. This will also involve our families, because without our families, our students will only be so successful on their journey. And so, families will also have access to some of the resources that will be available through the Family Resource Center and other community agencies across the city.
Thank you. I know you mentioned the PASC program in the past. That, that's not necessarily for like the opioid, that's not, that's in general. That's a general program, not necessarily just for like...
The funding source is the opioid grant?
Right.
But that does not mean that students have to be engaging with opioids to be eligible for the PASC program. Correct.
Okay, and there's no issue in terms of receiving this grant, we're not going to run into repercussions for that? Because it's not necessarily an opioid-related...
No, we need all eligible criteria.
Okay. And we receive these funds from the city?
We did.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
We, just as a point of clarification also, we will be partnering with Diamond. It's a two-year grant. Our goal is because the opioid funding is for the city, not just for Fall River Public Schools. There are a number of schools here in the city. So, for year one, it will be those schools in Fall River, which are Stone, RPA, and Derfie. And we will also be partnering with Diamond in year one, and then moving into year two, assuming that we can get funded for year two, we would love to look to extend this conversation with the charter schools, both Argosy and Atlantis, so that all students in Fall River, in lieu of being suspended from school, will be able to be provided resources and support through the program specifically.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion second. Hold, do you want to talk, Mr. Agia?
Second question.
I got a motion and a second on hold. Mr. Agia?
Just a question on sustainability. I know we talked, in here is year one and potentially year two. What is the long-term, I don't know how much money's in that settlement. Has the city committed to multiple years? What is, because when we hire people, now we're on the hook for those folks. So, just looking at...
So, it's a contractual position, and as we know, we always, you know, it's unfortunate, but it is a reality that there are very often openings in the world of SEL across the district. So, should funding at the end of the fiscal, at the end of the calendar year be cut, we would look to move those folks should they so choose to move into a district-level position. However, long-term funding, we are going to be looking to secure additional funds. We do believe that we will be able to get some really strong outcomes as it relates to these, this program, and we are very confident that there will be some folks through grant-funded additional opportunities out there that we will be able to apply for and be the recipients of. So, we're going to start slow to go fast, but the idea is that we're going to leverage the funds that we've been granted, and then we will look for additional funds to keep it going, if it's not something that we can sustain within the operating budget.
Yeah, I just think it's something to look at. I think it makes sense to, if the city doesn't, they only have a part of money, and if, once it's gone, it's probably gone, but just sustainability is important, especially now given the budgets moving forward. That if we're, everything you presented at the subcommittee and here was valid, good positions, good ideas, all that stuff. But at the end of the day, if we don't have money to pay people, we got to figure out a way to do it. So, thank you for your work.
All right, we got a motion and a second. I do want to say a couple of things on this, though. This is part of the city's effort with the opioid funds, which came from the Sackler Settlement. It's going to go for about the next 15 to 20 years, Mr. Agia, so I think we'll be able to keep it rolling for a while. I don't know if we'll be able to sustain the levels. The first checks out were extremely large, a couple of million dollars. But I do want to compliment Amy and the Farver Public Schools, because as she said, this was a very competitive grant. We, we had a number of our partners throughout the community that came in. I was not on the panel to evaluate the projects, but everybody that left, that left the meeting and they were in the conference room, put the Farver Public Schools proposals as the top, the top program they wanted to fund. It's going to start with, it started already working in with Chris Heron. The curriculum's going to change, and it's a problem that we're going to partner with, we hope, before we're done, all the schools, charter schools, Catholic schools, and the public schools across the district. The money was, is going to go to Farver Kids, and that's the way I look at it. And I want to, again, compliment Amy and the team with the superintendent. They brought this tremendous proposal to the table that people were ready to check off on that night. So, compliments to you. Mr. Dias?
Thank, I just want to continue with the mayor just said. This is a really good proposal and something very serious within our city. And, and again, just to the city, I believe this was started when we signed on to a lawsuit. I believe former Judge Macy was the person who signed on to this, and yeah, this is, I really, I'm really excited to see that this will continue for a long period of time as well, and making sure, I think, going, especially in the years going forward, we move to education and really support education on the dangers of some of the drugs that are out there. I yield.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Deb, can you call the roll on the opioid settlement funding for the school?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
I'm staying.
He said stay.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is approval of contracts. We have a number of contracts to go. We have the new ones first, and then we'll do the others. Does anybody want to hold on any of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6?
Siemens, the last one?
The last one, how do you say that, Mr. Agia?
Siemens?
Siemens.
I believe.
All right, Industries. We have the other group. Any conversation on those? I'll take a motion in a sec.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Are we just doing new or continuations?
We're doing the new ones first, Mr. Dias, and then we're going to go to the grant contracts that continue on. And then the special ed contract.
Okay, I have none.
The new, the new batch first.
Okay.
I have a hold on the last one by Mr. Agia. The rest... Yeah, the facilities contracts. Oh, all of them, okay. I got you. They broke them down to three things, grants, contracts.
Motion to approve facilities contracts only.
Facilities contracts only. So, let's do that batch first.
Second.
I have a motion on the first batch, facilities contract.
First group.
Deb, would you please call the roll? Yeah. We're holding the last one because he asked for Siemens. Mr. Dias seconded it.
Yeah, just E7.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next one is called Grant Contracts, Apple for Education.
No.
Nope. Siemens?
Oh, I'm, stay with me, Mr. Agia. Go back to Siemens. I forgot you.
So the only, I'm just looking at the timing of the PO dates. And obviously, we know we had a fire at Spencer Boarden. And when this came up, and it says Spencer Boarden, it's related to fire, and that begs the question of the time. But as I'm looking at it, it looks like it was in July. And then now it's before us. I'm just looking for some clarity on sort of how this, so-
Does it have anything to do with the fire?
No, it has nothing to do with the fire. The system needed to be upgraded, panel and devices. Siemens is proprietary system. So when we change devices in that system, we change only with the company. Everything has its own IP address, and the system is very proprietary, as I said. So the contract and the planning of the work started early. But the actual work took place in August on the construction part of it. That work was finished up before school started. So this is not something that just happened, it's just coincidence that it happened after the- Exactly, yes. Time. Rotten coincidence. Was this for the, it says panel, is that fire panel? Fire panel. Fire panel and devices. So in the question I had on that, we got a report from the fire that it seemed like everything was normal. Yes. But I'm not sure if there was more to the story. But if there was a fire inside there where the fire panel is, wouldn't that set off the alarm? Typically? It did set the alarm off. The head, the sprinkler head went off, the smoke alarm went off. All of the systems operated within seconds to minutes. And then we read something somewhere about somebody having, didn't pull the fire alarm, but then they got the vice principal, and then the fire alarm got pulled. Is it not clicked on or the other? By that point, the alarm went, it was already going off. It was that quick. It went off automatically, is my point. Whatever I read about somebody pulling it- The system went off, no, the system went off automatically. Should click it off? Exactly. Automatically? Yes. And then the other thing I heard was that there was a mess in there, in the boiler room or wherever this is. I don't even know where it is. But maybe we superintendent, we can get a report on any other issues that came up as they were addressing the fire. Was there any other issues? That's all. Thank you. I yield.
I got a motion to approve on Siemens.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Sorry, one more, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I know you said it's proprietary, and does that mean that we can't make it not proprietary by buying new equipment? Or is it just too much money? It's just a very expensive endeavor. The equipment itself is one piece of this, but the actual rewiring, you know, the system is very expensive. So it wouldn't be cost benefit to, obviously, we shouldn't have proprietary things if we can help it. If we can avoid it, yes. But unfortunately, in some instances, such as this one, this system also exists in Sylvia and in the Green School. So we will be doing an upgrade similar to this in the next fiscal year. Thank you. I yield.
Just a mayor, I have a quick question.
Mr. Dias.
Where would this device be installed? Is it going to go where the boiler room is?
No, this device, the main panel is in the main lobby at Spencer, on the first floor, near the principal's office. And then the devices are everywhere. There are devices in the building. Were all exchanged onto the new panel.
Okay. And just quickly to Mr. Agia's point, just going forward, if there was like any debris left in the boiler room or anywhere, just making sure that-
So there were insulation, there were insulation, old insulation that was piled in a section of that room. There were some filter boxes that were in the room. But most of the time, these filter boxes are in boiler rooms. They were up on a table. There were a couple on the floor that shouldn't have been on the floor. And other than that, the boiler room needed to be swept. But it's hard, after the fact, to see, there's a lot of water damage in that particular room. Fortunately, we didn't lose anything other than the water heater. But there was some water damage in the room and affected those boxes, and all of that stuff was cleaned up the same day that the incident happened.
Did that directly relate to the fire?
No, no.
I yield. Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second on Siemens. Deb? I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Dias. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Next one up is Apple for Education.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I need discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Next page, Special Education Contracts. I have two, Landmark School, Whitney Academy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve both. Any discussion on those two?
This is a quick question. This is just the new, not the continuations? This is not the continuation, Special Education? Okay. I yield.
So there's the two at the top, Landmark and Whitney. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Now, this is the continuation of the grant contracts at the top. We can take those two first, if you want. Hill for literacy, both.
Motion to approve both.
I like to hold, I like to place a hold on both.
You want to put a hold on both? So we got a hold on both. I have a motion to approve, though. Can I get a second on the motion? I got a second, but now discussion. Mr. Dias.
If, real quickly, we don't, I don't need it tonight, but if we can get some data on how effective this is, whenever I see these consultation services come about, I always look for ways that we can save money and see if they're valid. Obviously, they wouldn't be before us if the administration didn't believe they were valid. But if we can just see some data to back that up, that would be swell. Thank you.
Mr. Dias?
Just, I want to be really clear that this grant funding is specific to these kinds of services. So we didn't get a literacy grant with the ability to write for kind of anything under that umbrella. The grant is actually specific to these services, these contracted services.
Mr. Dias?
Right. Just looking, just looking at it, when I was looking at it on board docs, just want to see how useful, all right, then I'll-
But we can, we can get you some data. I just, I just wanted to speak specific to this.
Sure.
This clean grant, yeah.
I'm going to approve it, just so we can see it going forward.
Sure.
Mr. Agia?
I think that's a valid, valid point, just to say, we spend a lot of money on training, leadership training, all this stuff. So I think it would be a good practice to get something to say. This is the benefit of that grant. I think it would be good. I yield.
I have a motion and a second, Deb? Please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Okay, then we go into special education contracts.
Mr. Mayor?
We have a number of them. Mr. Corey?
I just want to know in general, Mr. Chairman, I mean, there are considerable amount of special education contracts here, and some for very high prices. I'd just like to ask the superintendent, you know, are we getting out the bang for our buck with all of these extra services that are helping our students? Is there a per pupil rate, or does it go according case by case?
So I'm sure Mrs. Obenchain will have more to say. But there are rates assigned for, and they're dependent on the placement itself. I think in terms of bang for the buck, we have a responsibility to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. And when we're not able to do that here in the district, we have the responsibility to send them out of district for services.
Yeah, because I question it, Ms. Obenchain, because, I mean, it's pretty considerable, you know? So it's also a revelation of the needs that are within our district, so.
Right. We have about 130 students currently that are out of district. And it is simply because, like Dr. Curly said, that we have tried to meet their needs in our district, but they require a level of care that we just can't do here.
Certainly. I can see some of the places, you know, that we're receiving help from.
Sure.
It's a price that probably fluctuates from year to year, depending on our demographic. Is that safe to say? Because it's a considerable amount of money.
Oh, it's definitely a considerable amount of money. It's really the prices that the placement set. They give us their rates. And it depends on the type of, the needs of the kids that are there. Do they have a one-to-one associated with them, paraprofessional? Do they have nursing care? Do they have related services? All of those pieces go into the tuition, how many days. Some of these programs go 12 months of the year.
Sure. Do some of the occupational therapists within our district serve some of these cases as well?
They don't go into the out-of-district placements, as far as the out-of-district schools. Those schools typically have their own service providers, so they don't typically go there.
That answers my questions. Thank you. I yield.
Any other questions, Mr. Agia?
The, on that, maybe we, just for the identification of everyone, that we get circuit breaker reimbursements? And I think sometimes people just see that we got a few million dollars in circuit breaker, and it just seems like, oh, good, that's great. But there's a reason why you get the circuit breaker reimbursement, because of the cost of each of these children. So I think maybe just a quick summary of what is the circuit, like this comes out to a lot of money, but the government gives us circuit breaker back. The state funds circuit breaker, not at the rate that they should. So I think by you highlighting it for us, we can then advocate for them to say, that should be fully funded, so that we could not have to put budget money in. So I just think a one pager-
Sure, I can certainly get you the circuit breaker.
I'm not sure if anybody had any holds, but we never got to that part. Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Dias?
Can we place holes on the Judge Rottenberg Center and South Coast Educational Collaborative?
Okay, so we got a hold on Judge Rottenberg Center. Where, Mr. Dias, where is the South Coast?
Judge Rottenberg Educational. I think they changed the name.
I got you on that one. Where's the South Coast one?
Towards the bottom of the page. It's 1.9 million.
The very bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Those two? Any others? I'd like a motion to approve all the others in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
abstain.
Mr. Corey?
Okay.
Ms. Larvee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Now, the two we have a hold on, Judge Rottenberg Center, Mr. Dias.
Sure. And first of all, Ms. Obenchain, I want to thank you for taking this very seriously. I know we've spoken prior, addressed many concerns that I have and others have had. And I have a lot of faith and trust in you in making sure nothing bad, basically, nothing bad happens to our Fall River students when they go to institutions such as the JRC. I do have a few questions and concerns. So I see for Judge Rottenberg Center, Judge Rottenberg Educational, I'll just say the JRC, I'm more used to saying that. For FY '23, the tuition was $198,000 and change. And going into this year, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're up to $242,000. And I'll just try to find explanation as to why the big increase in tuition.
So I'd have to go back to revisit what the 2023 tuition was specifically. So I can tell you that Mr. Sullivan, our chief compliance officer, went and observed at JRC and was able to talk to some of the staff and directors over there. So along with the base tuition, which is around $170,000, $179,000, the student does have a one-to-one, so that is the additional increase. I just don't know if the student had that same staffing last year, the 2023. I'd have to just go back and check our records.
So you definitely know it was not an increase in tuition. They're just not charging more for?
I'm sure the tuition did go up, like it goes up for every school, but it didn't go up that dramatically. I can tell you that the tuition was $189, which, and then like $66,000 or something was for the one-to-one para, I believe. Mr. Sullivan can answer.
I did pull the information for last year as well, and I didn't see as much of a stark contrast.
I'm sorry, sir. What's your position? I never met you before.
Jim Sullivan, Chief Compliance Officer for Special Ed. Nice to meet you. I did pull the information earlier today, just for a quick review, and I didn't notice the stark contrast in the financials. So I, I mean, I'd be happy to go back and look, just to compare the numbers from last year to this year. Because the figure that you gave for last year's expenditure doesn't sound accurate. But I will absolutely look at that.
Okay. And I don't know who has the answer to this question. And maybe this is something we have, we should look into, in my opinion. Is there any way we can determine if we can just not do business with an organization? And if the Department of, what's the department's name is, DCF, if they make a placement, is it, do we have any say as a district to dispute that? I don't know who would have the answer to that.
So when a student is placed by DCF, we are responsible for that educational piece of it. So we don't fund the total placement, we just fund their schooling. We've consulted with Michael Joyce, and we, it is our obligation to fund that when they are placed there. On the student's placement page, it does say that the student was placed by a state agency, not by us there, when we engage in a cost share. However, we have made it very well-known to DCF that is not something that Fall River, this is not a placement that Fall River would like our students to go to, if at all possible. But I think I've shared with you, sometimes these students have been waiting for placements in hospitals for months and months and months. So this is the only place that we'll be able to meet their needs.
Sure. I'm going to make a motion here. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the full allocation of funds, and that this school committee go on the record condemning electroshock therapy. I'll make that in the form of motion.
I'm sorry, timeout. Can I say something?
Second.
Okay, go ahead. And then I'll say something.
I do want to say-
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Pereira, I'm sorry.
Isn't that the rules?
Listen, I-
Hold on a second.
Okay, no, go ahead.
Hold on a second, please. Please. Just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
When a person makes a motion, someone needs to second the motion to have a discussion. I am not trying to shut down Ms. Pereira.
No.
So every time I say something, she starts, ah, blah, blah.
She didn't say anything.
Oh, she did. So I seconded it so that we can have a discussion. That's all.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Pereira?
I'm very well of how things work. I think my reaction was more, I can't believe I have to have this conversation again. So I'm going to give my piece on this, because I don't think, Colin, you were here when I spoke to it last time.
I was in the audience, but sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no. Just my opinion. My opinion on the healthcare of individuals that are not me. And that is that, it's not my business. Now, the reason I say that is because I have been, people have reached out to me who work for DCF, very concerned, questioning why Fall River is not providing the education that we're legally and morally obligated to do. And I simply say that we have a difference of opinion up here. That's all. Here's what the problem is. This is what they say. Now, these are the people, now you can, we can sit here and believe every DCF worker and every person who puts kids in these places, just horrible people, but we know that's not true. Because just like the educators that were here today, social workers don't do it for the money. It's a really, really hard job. And they do it because they have a passion to help. We have kids there right now who, by the way, in case anyone wants to know, are doing really, really fantastic there and are thriving, thriving. These are kids who haven't thrived anywhere in a very long time. And let me remind you that we in Fall River could not provide them the services they needed. Unfortunately, their needs are so wide, and we don't have the ability to provide those children what they need. Now, we can have a conversation outside of this regarding electroshock therapy, which literally has nothing to do with what's going on here, because minors do not get electroshock therapy. And the last time I checked, we only provide educational needs to minors. So, and even beyond that, even beyond that, even if we say we don't want it for minors, we don't, I'm going to, I'm going to say nobody should have it, even adults. I asked my colleagues to actually research the history of electroshock therapy. I do not personally, it's not a choice I would personally make for myself or my children, but I'm not going to sit here and play judge and jury to people who want to choose their own healthcare needs. So believe it or not, if you do research into electroshock therapy, you'll see that there are five states in the country that still allow it, and you will see that adults are signing up for it because they believe it helps. Does it cure all their ailments? No, it does not. But does it assist some to function in society and better their lives? Yes, it does. So I'm not gonna sit here and condemn a healthcare choice that people have a right to make, adults. Adults, because that's what we're talking about, have a right to make. Now, with that being said, let's talk about children, that's fine. I'm a parent. I'll be damned if somebody's gonna tell me the healthcare my child needs. I don't care who you are, if you think you know my child better than me, you are wrong. And now we go in to say, well, DCF, that's not a parent. Again, I know many DCF workers, and I respect their job, just as I do the educators here. I respect their knowledge, and I respect that they know that child way better than anybody on this stage does. And they know what is best for that child. So we can sit here and have our own personal opinions about healthcare, right? We could sit here and have a con, we could sit here and have a debate about vaccinations, for Pete's sake. The reality is, everyone has their own choice. You choose not, no big deal to me. You choose to, no sweat. Your healthcare is your choice. The healthcare of your child is your choice. We here on the school committee should not be making healthcare decisions about our students, because quite frankly, it's detrimental. God forbid, we eventually stop paying this, and those kids who are actually thriving right now get removed from a place they're do, they're doing well in, from adult relationships that they've established to help them through their mental health needs. Because we're, mental health is health. So I hope we all understand that, too. We can't separate them. This isn't like, uh, there's no difference whether it's, we're talking about some, a kid who's neurodivergent or a kid who has a cardiac issue. It's a kid who needs help, period. And I would encourage anybody here, like the gentleman down there, to go visit the school. Go visit. I will tell you one thing, there are, I, I have, I've worked in many facilities such as this, and I have not found one that's perfect. Not one hospital's perfect, not one school is perfect. But you have to find the right spot for these children. And these children, again, I'm gonna repeat, thriving there. So when we have conversations about opinions on electroshock therapy, I don't care, that's, that's all well and good. Have those opinions, but deal with it in your own life. Our job right here is to do what we need to do, and I feel very confident that the students we have at that school are getting what they need. That school specializes in neurodivergent kids at the highest level. This is a specialty that you cannot find everywhere. I wish you could. I wish there were more places, but there not. And you have kids that kicked out of this, kicked out of that, kicked out of this, where are they gonna go? Anybody wanna give me your address, are you willing to foster? Because these kids require so much care. So I understand and I respect that, I do. I truly respect your opinion, everyone's opinion on here, um, believe it or not. But I just don't think it's your job to give an opinion on, on someone's healthcare, and certainly not someone's child. Our job is to provide their education. So I'm not gonna condemn any form of therapy that even if it only helps one person, it helps one person. It's just not my job, and I, I don't feel comfortable doing that. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Dias, then you. Mr. Dias and Mr. Agia.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, again, I respect the colleague's, um, opinion to my right, and I respect her passion. Um, I believe there was, one, I would dispute some of the claims, especially that minors, um, cannot receive electroshock therapy at the JRC. I, I believe we should have, um, her, a, a look into that. I, I, I believe that's otherwise. Um, secondly, um, no one was making the argument and, or even making the motion or anything that, that, that the school committee is making decisions for others, um, or healthcare decisions for others. That, that was never the argument, that was never discussed. It was, it was a good argument for, um, something that was never brought up. Um, and I would agree with a lot of things you just said. Um, with that being said, um, electroshock therapy, it was condemned by the United Nations. It was condemned by many, um, human rights organizations. And, and again, and I completely, and the reason I made the motion to approve this is because I have full respect and I have full confidence in Ms. Obachan and her, um, administration to make sure our students are, um, being taken care of, taking, being taken care of well. And with, with that being said, I, I don't want, I'm not gonna put anyone on the spot, but from conversations I've had with some in the administration, that, 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 everyone, I think a lot of people know that J, JRC is not somewhere you want to go. Uh, someone, um, say, um, someone, please, so, someone tell me if I'm wrong. But at the same time, this school committee, I believe, has an obligation to stick up for what's right. And to, and all I'm saying is, we just go on the record saying that we condemn the use of electroshock therapy. It's not a good thing to be using on students. It's been misused by that organization. I do have concerns about sending Fall River students to that organization. But again, I'm trying to balance the, the, um, the need here, and it's a legitimate need. And I've, again, spoken to the administration on this, and I have their complete confidence. But at the same time, this school committee should go on the record for something good, and we should condemn electroshock therapy. I yield.
Uh, um, Mr. Agia was next.
I might have missed it. We, did you mention that this was, how many students? This tuition was for how many students?
This tuition is for one student right now.
One student?
Yes.
So if we hear that "they," meaning plural, are doing very well at this program, we have one student, I just want to clarify that.
We are funding one student. There are two students from Fall River, um, at JRC. The second student was placed there at least a year ago, fully funded by DCF.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So I think we just need to, um, this motion would do nothing but simply reiterate what you've already told everyone related to that, based on last year's. We had a bill, we weren't paying the bill. We all get it. And we're opposed to shock therapy as a behavioral intervention. This is not what you, if you Google, if you look up something and say ECT, other stuff that's used with, uh, people with mental illness, that's not what this is. They call it shock therapy, this is different. This is a behavioral intervention for kids. So that's the difference between what you would look at when you say, there is some, some, um, technologies that are out there to try to say ECT, this is not what this is. This is for a behavioral intervention. And then when we, you already said you talked to DCF, they're very well aware of what's happening. Is there any students that we're not paying for currently? We're refusing to pay for that. They're not, they're getting services and we're not paying.
We have not been asked to pay for the second student that's there yet, so we have not refused anybody.
So therefore, we are not, not paying anyone for their services at this. So I'd ask the superintendent to try to communicate with whoever Ms. Pereira from DCF talked to that said we are not getting, we're not paying the bill. And please communicate with them, have a meeting, whatever you gotta do, to be very clear that that's not true, a true statement, just like we would do with anyone else. Correct the record to say that we are not doing that. So if DCF or their workers are calling school committee members to try to say that we are not doing what we need to do to pay people, we need to correct that, because that's obviously not the case. So I support this motion because we've done the same thing before. This student didn't have anywhere else to be placed. And trusting your professional judgment, you've been there, you've visited. Trusting Mr. Sullivan, you people know what it is. And at the end of the day, when you come to us and say, we have to pay this bill because nowhere else can service this child, it's our obligation then to pay the bill. So I'm gonna vote yes for Mr. Dias's motion, but I don't think it's anything more than what we've already done last year, paying the bill. With that, I yield.
Uh, Ms. Pereira?
I'm glad you made a point. There is a difference, and which is what I think Collins, Mr. Dias was saying, because I'm, I'm not incorrect, they're not using that shock behavior therapy on minors. But other therapy can be used on minors if they go through a process of going to court and, and a rigmarole of things. So this isn't something that's directly happening, number one. Number two, what I said was accurate. We, we voted here, I voted no, but I'm pretty sure we can look back. We voted that we didn't want DCF, remember? So it was before, I think, Mr. Corey and Mr. Dias were here. We had voted that we told DCF, we're no longer gonna pay for kids at JRC, so don't put them there, if you put them there, we're not paying for it, and we voted for it. So yes, we have a kid there, we're not paying for, and DCF is. And eventually, they may say, this isn't right, and then what happens to that child? The bottom line is, people are there because it's the last place for them to go. So what I said wasn't inaccurate, it's totally accurate. We have kids there, we're not paying for. But I, I'm glad that I have, that we have support to pay this now, that's great, I appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Okay. I, I, um, I do want to say that, um, I was told by one of the teachers that came to my house, um, from the JRC, that no students in the last eight years have gotten any, um, of the electric shock therapy at all. It is for adults over 22 with, am I right on that, with consent, as, as a treatment option?
Sure, and yes, and for any, if they were going to go to court to petition the use of what they call the GED for a minor, it would have to be on the student's IEP. And that means that us in Fall River would be the ones proposing that. And I assured this committee last year, I will say it again this year, we are not going to put that on anyone's IEP.
Okay.
Um, but I also think it's important that everybody understands, too, that for all students in out-of-district placements, someone from my team make sure that we visit each placement at least yearly. We complete a monitoring form that, um, is given to us, uh, guidelines from DC, uh, from, um, DESI. And we make sure that we put our eyes on our students every single year.
Okay, so I have, do I have two motions here, one to approve the funding and another for the electric shock?
Uh, I made it in one motion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it already was a motion to approve the funding, if you wanna add another motion on.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I made the motion to approve the allocation in addition to that we condemn the use of the electroshock therapy as described by Mr. Agia. Uh, that, that was one motion.
He had put a hold on it, so this is his motion, there is no other motion. He put a hold on it, and Mr. Dias said he wanted to make it with the, with this letter attached to it.
I don't, I don't like attaching peripheral things to a motion to pay for a kid's services that I don't know enough about. Um, I don't wanna chip the kid because I don't know enough about electroshock therapy. People are talking about mushrooms, whatever the future holds, who knows? Um, I would rather vote on the funding and then vote on the motion, but I'll do whatever you want.
Roll call.
Huh?
Just roll call.
Yeah, go ahead, Deb. Go to the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Are we, I'm confused as to what this says.
This is a double motion that's, that's.
One motion.
Uh, well, it's one motion with two parts, pay the bill, and, uh, we don't like electric shock therapy.
So if, can I ask a question?
Mr. Mayor, we're in the mid row, we're in the mid row call.
Can I ask a question about the vote? If this, if I vote no and it goes no, am I allowed to make a motion just to approve the funding? Because I don't think we, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Can I do that or no?
Yeah, you vote whatever you want.
You know what? Yes.
Ms. Mayor Coogan?
No, no. And the last one, Mr. Dias, was the South Coast Educational Collaborative.
Thank you. Just very quickly, um, I'm in support of the contract, obviously. Uh, and I, I just want to say, um, just want to re- reiterate, um, the concerns I made in the past, just making sure, and the same with the JRC as well, but you can make this with any one of these. If we're sending our students to an, an institution, we gotta, like, um, as Ms. Obachan just said, make sure we have our eyes and making sure there's ever any issue that arises, making sure we have the proper surveillance to, one, make sure there's no dispute of the facts, and two, to make sure this district is fiscally sound from any, um, litigation or any complaint. Um, and I have full trust that we're working on that. I yield a motion to approve.
Second.
A second? I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Just the last one, South Coast Collaborative.
Bottom, the last one.
That's what I needed to know, okay.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is the committee of the whole. Item number one, is a discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of John Vaskinsales as the attendance officer.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the, the new attendance officer? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-2 is discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Kelly Maderas.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
I have a motion, a second, on Kelly Maderas as a nurse for the district. Discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Abstain.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Um, 12-3 is discussion and vote to approve the use of tables and chairs from the district for the Holiday Fund Organization.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and to approve the use of the chairs for the Fall River Holiday Fund. I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-4 is a presentation and discussion of the Fall River Public Schools data as presented by Brian Reposa, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer. Mr. Reposa. Oh, I, I, yeah, it was, it was tabled, so I'm, ask for a motion to lift it from the table.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to lift. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Reposa.
Okay, good evening. Um, so I'm just gonna give an overview of, um, our accountability data from last year. Um, I've included some school-specific data, as well just an overview for the district, and I'm happy to take, um, any questions as well. So the first slide here is, uh, related to our chronic absenteeism. Um, on this slide, um, you'll note that, uh, the years are across the bottom, 2019 to 2024. Um, from 2022 on, uh, we've had, uh, a decline in the percentage of chronic absenteeism, uh, which is moving in the direction that we want to see. Um, we can see that, um, our student group, uh, that has had the largest decline are English learners. Um, and so just as a reminder, chronic absenteeism is defined as students missing 10% or more of the school year. We, this is factored into our accountability, um, as a district as well. This slide, um, is related to accountability percentiles. So what you'll see here, um, is the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, assigns a percentile to schools, uh, based on their overall, um, performance. And in the green is the current, uh, 2024 percentile. In the blue, um, is the previous year's percentile. And so, um, we can see that, you know, because it's a percentile, we want schools to be increasing overall. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Reposa, do you prefer questions at the end or during your presentation?
It's up to you. Happy to take a question, yes.
Actually, I, I'll wait till our chair returns.
Okay. Um, so you can see in the green here, these are percentiles from this year, um, the blue percentiles from last year. Um, and so, you know, from this chart, you can see there are schools, um, that have increased percentile, as well as some schools that have actually declined, um, decreased their percentile. And so it's important to note that they're compared to, uh, like schools, um, when establishing their, their rank in a percentile. Our district classification right now, we're classified as not requiring assistance or intervention. Um, and we're classified as making moderate progress toward targets. Our schools are, um, in these four buckets. And so you'll notice, um, starting, uh, all the way on the left, substantial progress toward targets, Doran, Laterno, Sylvia, Spencer, Borden, moderate pro, uh, progress, Tanzi. Um, the schools designated in need of focused and targeted support, Durfee, Green, Henry, Lord, Cuss, Morton, Talbot, Veris, and Watson, and then in need of broad, comprehensive support, Fonsica. This shows us how progress is calculated, um, overall progress toward improvement targets. And so, um, this is an example, uh, from Talbot. So, um, two years of data are used to calculate a school's overall progress. And so Talbot in 2024, this past year, um, made 82% progress toward targets. That's weighted at 60%, and last year, they made, uh, 56% progress toward targets at Talbot, um, and that's weighted at 40%. And so the overall progress is, uh, 72%. Yes.
Thank you. Um, uh, just quickly, um, so what's?
Do you want me to go back to the previous, or?
That, that one and the next one is a gen, a general question. Um, I noticed both Stone and RPA are included in this, um, presentation and, and the data, and I was just wondering as to why.
Yeah, they don't receive, um, an accountability percentile, um, just due to the nature of the school, the size of the school, the amount of students who complete the assessment. Um, so they're not countered, uh, they're not counted in the accountability. They still have, uh, their own performance data, and so we can see, you know, what their performance would look like, but from an accountability lens, they're not factored in.
Okay, um, I, I'll let you continue, sorry.
Okay. So this slide shows, um... So this slide shows, you know, we have schools, as we know, that, you know, are not performing where they should be. And so I think this is an important slide that demonstrates what schools have made progress, where they're landing in terms of progress toward targets. And so we can see right now, we have Talbot, Cuss, Fonsica, Doran, Laterno, Sylvia, and Spencer, Borden, that are designated as having made substantial progress in terms of me, um, percentage points toward their indicators. Moderate, Morton, Green, Henry, Lord, Veris, and Tansey, and then limited or no progress, Durfee. This is based on the two years of data, 2023 and 2024. These are sort of the charts that you would see if you looked at the Department of Education, you know, the student achievement, the performance charts. And so top left is ELA, this is specifically for high school. Top right is high school bio, and then the bottom chart is math. And so just in terms of telling the story, in ELA, if we look at the blue would be exceeds expectations, the green is meets, the orange color is partially meeting, and then the red is not meeting. And so for instance, if you look at ELA, the number of students who are not meeting expectations, we actually are at thirty percent, so, you know, roughly a third of our kids. And that does represent an increase from the 2023 year. This is high school only.
Is this just Durfee only?
This is high school only, exactly.
Which is Durfee, not RPA?
Yes.
Accountability part, okay.
Yes, exactly. Yep. High school bio, you can see that, you know, there's a decrease in the percentage. I'm just looking at the not-meeting category right now, the red, there's a decrease in the percentage of the not-meeting from last year to, from 2023 to 2024. And then high school math, you'll note that there's an increase in the percentage of students that are not meeting from twenty percent to thirty-eight percent. Okay, so this is high school only Durfee. These are grades three to eight, and so we know the assessment also spans, students take the assessment in three and eight, they don't take the assessment in nine, and then the high school data is factored around when students should take it in grade ten. And so in grades three to eight, for ELA, top left, you can see that we're, we're sort of flat in the not-meeting category, the red category, thirty-seven percent in 2023, thirty-seven percent in 2024. And there was actually a slight decrease in the students in the green in the meeting category for ELA, looking like those students were shifting to partially meeting. In science, we had, actually had a slight increase in the not-meeting category, and we have about five points, and we're, we're the same in the meets and exceeds category. And then for math, we actually had a slight decrease in not-meeting. So we went from thirty-seven to thirty-five percent, so a slight two-point decrease in not-meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Aguirre.
Can I just ask you a quick question on those two slides?
Yes.
So the one that you mentioned for high school?
Yes.
It looks like English and math, we're having more students that are in the lowest category. And the other one, which combines all three to eight, seems to flat. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair to say.
Compared to two, so?
Yes.
My concern is, and I always said it, is that we, these assessments and the numbers are not good, and it's very hard to sugarcoat it. And I just think those two slides, when you showed them, show, one, being flat is not good enough because we're still trying to get back to pre-COVID, all that, so I don't think anybody's saying that that's good enough. But the more worrisome one to me is that previous slide. Because when you see the number where you, especially in English and math, where you see the number, like that for me is the layer.
Students are moving in the wrong direction, absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? So that's why I was just trying to point that, I think that, I think you probably concur, but for me, that's telling.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I'm really just relaying now the facts of the data, right? I, I, you know, we definitely have a lot of work to do. I would say it's concerning, absolutely. And, you know, by no means am I saying, hey, this is, this is great progress. We know that we certainly have work to do. But yes, the, the high school slide, you know, does look like we're increasing the number of students in that red category not-meeting, whereas the three to eight, we're sort of flat there.
Thank you, I yield.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Well, just taking a look at the district heat map and comparing the information as well, and not right now, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead or not, but also, will we be able to receive this from like different student groups as well, to take a look at these things?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I have some slides, I think, that speak to different student groups, and that's exactly what we do at the district level. So at the very least, where consistently our priority really calls out specifically students with disabilities and multilingual learners. So every time we're looking at data at the district level or school level, we have at minimum those three lenses. And then really, certain schools will also be looking at other subgroups. For instance, they may look at a large Hispanic population, for instance, right? And so there's a lot of different ways that we can analyze the data based on subgroups.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
Yep, absolutely. So this is a growth distribution. And so really what this shows, I'll just explain the graphic, because, you know, we know that there's two different measures. We have our performance distribution in terms of where we land in exceeds, meets, partially meets, or not meeting. And then we also have growth. In order for us to close achievement gaps, we have to have high growth, right? That, that's important. And so what this chart shows is if you look at the color coding all the way to the right, the very light color indicates very low growth. And then if you go down, the darker green color indicates very high growth. At the bottom, you'll see the span from zero to one hundred, and so that basically represents the statewide distribution. So essentially, you would, at the state level, you'd have about twenty percent of your students that are in very low growth, twenty percent in low, twenty percent moderate. When we look at our district, the shading, I'll call out a couple areas of concern and then a couple areas, you know, of potential strength, right? So one would be grade six, as an example, in ELA. We can see that we have that very light yellow color representing thirty-two percent, right? So that would tell us that we have about a third of our kids with very low growth in grade six ELA. If you continue looking at the low growth, it looks like there may be a potential bright spot in the grade eight because we only have seventeen percent of kids with that low growth, okay, as compared to thirty-two percent, which is almost double, right? And so that, that's how we can interpret this chart. If I go all the way to the right side, grade five ELA, there's about twenty-one percent of students falling in that high, very high-growth category, and then same thing in grade eight for the, about twenty-one percent as well. But you can see certainly that grade six is a concern and grade ten is a concern. You know, really, a high percentage of students falling in that very low growth. This is the same type of chart for math. And so similarly, you can see right away, sixth grade math distribution, about thirty-three percent of our students falling in that very low-growth range. And then, which correlates with the slide, the slides earlier for the high school, grade ten ELA, about forty percent of our students falling in that very low growth, okay? So this, this, you know, sort of coincides or correlates in a way with the performance slide we saw earlier. So related to growth?
Can I, sorry, can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
Just a question, so, the superintendent, so the, that number, the forty-two percent, if I could ask you for a correlation report on the grades that those students had in the school?
So are you asking for grade ten specifically here?
Just specifically grade ten?
Yep.
Because I think we need to dig a little deeper into what are we, what are we calling, meaning, the requirements of the school. Because if you're in that forty-two percent way down the left side and they're passing their grades, we got a problem. Thank you, I yield.
Yeah, I think just to, you know, just to speak to that for a moment, if I can. I think, I understand the purpose around that. I think it might be helpful to correlate really with the students in the not-meeting category here because what happens is your growth is determined by your academic peers, and so it's actually possible to be meeting on the exam. So you actually could, could, let's say, get a meeting score on the MCAS, but have an SGP that's twenty, right? And so I think, but to your point, I think that's, that's an important point.
I agree with your point, whatever measure you'd like to use.
Absolutely, I would say, yes.
We need to start looking because if we're going to be required to now say, a student earns a diploma by doing the local requirements.
Yes.
We have to be honest about what those local requirements are.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so I will certainly correlate that. You're just looking for a correlation with the not-meeting category, yep. Okay, these are school growth highlights. And so, you know, really the median, you know, the middle is a fifty SGP. And so I just want to call out schools where we saw some bright spots. You know, one of the things we're, we're doing, you know, trying to do this year is really emphasize, like, there are opportunities where we can learn from each other, you know, school leaders, teachers. And so I think it's important that we're calling out where we see some gains because we can go see there and have conversations and say, what's happening there? What are you doing that's working, right? And so for all students category, and we actually carve out students with disabilities and multilingual learners here as well. For all students category, for ELA, Veris, Doran, Laterno, Sylvia, Watson, and Talbot all had SGP, aggregate SGPs above fifty. And for math, Laterno, Sylvia, Spencer, Borden, and Green, okay, so that was, that's some positive school growth. For students with disabilities, we did not have any schools with an SGP fifty-plus, but for math, for ELA, but for math, we actually had Sylvia and Spencer, Borden. And so there's something to learn there for, related to students with disabilities in mathematics. In terms of our multilingual learners, again, for ELA, school growth of fifty-plus, Henry, Lord, Laterno, and Talbot. And then for math, Doran, Laterno, Sylvia, and Watson. So again, I think these are opportunities for us to learn from these schools around their growth data. I'll kind of just speak briefly about next steps and then can take any additional questions. So one of our, in terms of next steps, we submitted, so, so as a district, we've created a district prioritization plan. We work closely with the statewide system of support, and we have a narrow focus in that plan around middle school mathematics. We know that that's an area of need. And I think, you know, there's a theory there around supporting middle school and how that also connects to what's happening at the high school as well. We also have a creation this year of a district instructional leadership team. We conduct learning walks, we've looked at student work, analyzed district-wide data. That team is comprised of myself, directors, and I actually have school principals that sit on that team as well. We do have some monthly support visits with the statewide system of support where they actually come on site. We also have done this year a school partnership model. So many of our directors actually have a cluster of schools that they work pretty closely with, with those principals, to support instruction in their building. And I've actually scheduled, you know, monthly visits to all schools. I'm really starting with our most needy schools, and so all schools in the bottom ten percent, I actually visit every month. I walk with the principals. Similarly, we've, we're conducting data dives with all of our schools, and we actually have a quarterly learning walks for principals. And then finally, we've instituted a short-term goal process. And so we're asking principals to really look closely at their data and create, you know, a six-to-eight week or a ten-week goal that we can measure and look for some marked improvement.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Were you finished?
Yep.
Principal, thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
So a few questions. So the data you just presented, is this something, obviously, we do this probably every single year, my, my first year here. Is this DESI required, like mandated, like this data, or just something we do in-house?
Do you mean doing the presentation?
Not the present, no, the, the, collecting the data.
Yes, so this is actually accountability data that's all publicly available on the, on our, on our, the DESI website for Fall River.
Right, so there's a DESI requirement that we?
Ye- yes.
Okay. So with that being said, and I'm a little puzzled as to why, hopefully someone can answer this question. Why is not Stone or RPA, why don't we collect accountability data for those two schools? I feel like we're doing them a disservice by not, but maybe someone can educate me.
Go ahead.
It has to do with the enrollment and the number of students who take the test. So there are, in order for schools to get an accountability rating, they're not going to base it on five test takers or, you know, small numbers kind of thing. So there is a minimum threshold. You need at least this many students at a particular grade level for those, for it to count. And so based on the, the enrollment of the schools, so if you think about a school like Stone, there aren't enough students, nine through twelve, who are testing at those grade levels for them to get an accountability measure. So the schools contribute to our district accountability, but they don't get an accountability rating themselves. What they do get is individual student data. So, and they're working with small numbers of students where they can certainly, I mean, our, our larger schools do it too, right? Look for trends in student data outside of accountability. Just look at the growth, look at the performance of individuals, and that's what those schools do.
Then can I request that at our next meeting that we get an additional presentation on the data we have at, at both Stone and RPA for our?
And, and you're able to access it on the DESI website as well. So as Dr. Curly stated, you, you, they won't have necessarily an accountability ranking because of the number of enrollment, but you can actually see the performance based, like, on MCAS, percent meeting or not meeting. But we can certainly provide any additional data for those.
Right, I, I understand that. I, I just like to see it done publicly, just because, so the public's aware and the committee's aware in a public setting.
Yeah, so to Dr. Curly's point, what will happen sometimes is even a school, a smaller school like a Watson, if they don't have, for instance, if they have a very small number of students with disabilities in like a grade four, they may not get a rating for grade four students with disabilities, right? But they would have for the other areas, so it's really based on that, that enrollment piece.
One, one last question, I apologize. I know I say, you. And just going back to Mr. Aguirre's point about the data, I mean, obviously, there's just numbers in there, and you say yourself, they're just not satisfactory, and we, if we, if we can just get an explanation, I don't know if you could provide today as to why the numbers are, aren't doing well and what we're doing to fix it. I mean, I think that's a fair question. I don't know if you have the answer right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think the answer is that, you know, schools really do know their data, their teams, you know, are working. I think there's not a clear-cut solution. If there were, you know, we, we would have done that, right? I think the idea is that teams are looking at their data, looking at their student needs, looking at the systems they have in their building, and we're supporting them with that work. I can certainly, you know, put something together around like some concrete next steps, similar to the stuff I have in these slides. But, you know, I, I don't know that there's a, you know, there's, there's not going to be like this, this clear, this is all you have to do, right? And so really what we see is we're at a macro level with the district. It's really about supporting schools to know their students really well. They know their systems well and support their, their teachers and students in their schools.
No, and I appreciate that. I think, so the committee understands the concrete next steps and maybe what, what's gone wrong, maybe it's certain things are curriculum for funding. I, I don't know the answer, I'll leave that up to you. But we definitely need to get the numbers up within the next few years. So there are definitely the concrete next steps and just maybe some explanations as to what's been, not been working, just so we know going in the future, what we need to be funding, what we shouldn't be funding going forward. Thank you, and I yield.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you for the presentation. It's always, you know, you try to mix in some positives and, and all that, I get it. It's not an easy thing to do to present, you know, the data's not good, hasn't been good for a number of years here. And I've been saying it since I've been on here, nobody has a quick answer. I'm not suggesting that we do. But what I've been saying at this podium for multiple years is that we have to do something different, and it has to be bold. And I think we're missing that boat sometimes. When, when I look, if you look at the last four or five years of funding that we received, we've received more funding than we've ever received. We hired more people than we've ever hired, and the numbers are still not where they need to be. So something doesn't, doesn't jive there. I'm not looking for the answer, I just, you know, think that when you, you make the presentation, you do the best you can with it, the numbers are the numbers, we can't sugarcoat them. But it's very difficult to move those numbers, a couple percentage points, like moving from eleven to thirteen or. People got to realize that that is not something that just happens by little incremental change, and it could still be in a school that is being run quite well, the teachers are doing a great job, the counselors are caring for their kids, all those things could be happening. And those numbers are still not where they need to be. So we have to internally, you all, look at something that's totally different because we're not doing it right. And one of the points, middle school is an issue. We've been saying this for how long? When are we going to just get rid of the middle school model across the district and think outside the box with some long-term planning to try to do something different? We've been saying the same thing year after year after year. So we need to look at the district, we need to look at where our students are, we need to, I put a request in today to have a subcommittee meeting in December based on going over the whole system. We say this every year, and then it becomes February and we don't do it. We need to look at something different because, because what we're doing right now is not working, even with everybody's best intentions and not saying the schools are unsafe, none of that stuff, right? This, nobody can tell us that this is okay. So I'm here to support you guys with whatever you need as far as votes. I voted for every single position at Durfee High School over the last four years. I sat in meeting after meeting after meeting with a prior principal and said, I will vote. I sat in meeting after meeting after meeting with a prior principal and said, I will vote for every one of these positions. Every one of those positions, I voted for, and I said to the principal across the table, but we need to see results. And I don't have to say what the results are, because you showed them right here. Go back and watch the video, you can see it. So as somebody that, as one member, I voted for all these new positions, I voted for this, I voted for that. We're not seeing the results of any of that, so something has to give, because we, we've, we're now out of money. We don't have millions of dollars extra to add, so the staff that we have is who we have. But the high school numbers going backwards, to me, is a real concern, but I do appreciate your work, Dr. Curly. You, you know, trying your best, I understand it, and you, and you're new to this position, but all I can say is please do something bold, that's all, I yield.
Any further discussion, Mr. Dias?
Oh, yes, just real, real quickly, um, and just getting back to my last point, it's been the last time, but um, what, what is the point of presenting the data, what, what is the point?
What do you mean?
Like what, like having the public um, data disco- like, the presentation, what, what is the point?
So I think the idea is that um, the data is embargoed until a certain date, and then once it's released, um, we are sharing it with the school committee for your knowledge.
Thank you, and, and just to that point as well, we have hundreds of more students at both Stone and RPA. And in, in some form, may it not be officially a DESI, I think it's important that we give some sort of similar comparison of data um, to be fair and equitable to those schools and to also have a better, for ourselves and the public to have a better understanding of what's going on there, and if we can have that presented, hopefully at the next meeting, that would be stellar, thank you, I yield.
Any further points to discuss? Thank you. Mr. Reposa? Twelve-five is a discussion and vote to approve the second read of the revived district handbook as presented by Dr. Tracy Curly, Superintendent Schools.
So uh, within um, within the backup, within the binders, um, there's a summary page um, with changes to the district handbook, and you'll notice that on some of the pages, like, you know, page two, page five, there are not substantive changes. We do have, um, there were some, you know, more substantial changes made to things like the bullying intervention, plan, um, progressive discipline alternatives, in-school suspensions, special ed, uh, discipline, homeschool, the equal education opportunities, um, was actually just updated with um, an update in a name. And then we have the um, grievance procedures, which were updated with a name. The health services pre-K to twelve, um, updated with new policy. So I don't know if you want to, if there were any questions on them in particular, all of the changes were highlighted in red.
And is the yonder policy within here as well?
I'm sorry?
Is the, is the new cellphone policy within the district handbook?
Yes, yep. It, um, it was added on pages sixty-four to sixty-seven, student use of cellphone and personal device.
Thank you, I yield.
Oh, actually, that was a different one. Oh, no, that's the one, yep, that's the yonder, that you're talking about.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just uh, reading through this, one of the things I think is uh, is important to point out, and we all can sit here, parents can sit at home, watch things, whatever they want to look at, and say, we need to control our schools, we need to control behavior in schools, schools need to be a place for learning, we're not going to tolerate misbehavior, just all that stuff. And at the same time as we say that, and we can all agree on that, the state legislature votes to tie the hands of administrators in the school district related to suspension or any of that. And I think it needs to be pointed out, because we can say all you want to a principal, whoever, oh, that action determined that student should get suspended immediately, because that's a suspend- suspendable act. Well, you read here, what they're, we're putting in the policy, which is based on the law and all the lawyers and everybody else that gets involved. You can't suspend the kid. People don't realize that the handcuffing that the administrators have, the superintendent has, on disciplined kids and controlling what's going on in the school. So I'm not looking to go back, this is the facts, it's the law. But we need to be able to articulate to the legislature, because they got a free ride on this. They changed all these laws without having a clue what the hell's going on, because somebody was a, was ridiculously suspended in Boston, or wherever it is. And then the whole legislature changes the laws so that the person that's working on, at this particular school, can't suspend the kid because they did something, whatever. One day, we were here at a meeting a couple years ago, and the kid said, we threw, a kid threw a chair across the table, across the room. We all said, hell, that kid should be suspended. Well, we can't suspend him because the laws and all this other stuff. So all I'm asking is that, I've been saying this for how long? We need to have legislative meetings from your administration, from the prior administrations, with the legislature, so that you can talk to them and explain to them that some of the decisions they're making are not benefiting the schools being run properly. Now, that can't be with us because of open meeting law, but we need to be able to, when I read these things here, and if anybody wants to read it, feel free to read it, page twenty-nine and page fifty-four, fifty-five. Those things are handcuffing, the principals and vice principals are trying to maintain order and discipline in these schools, and that's a fact. So all I'm asking is that you try to meet with the legislature to explain to them, please help us instead of handcuffing us. I yield, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dias?
Thank you, and just real quickly to Mr. Aguirre's point, um, I, I think with many, many, many things within the district, even within the state, I, I think the legislator does handicap us, I'm actually really happy to see the legislative program coming on. And I think we need to be using our voice as a school committee more often to advocate against legislation that handicaps us. And we need, we need more autonomy as a district when it comes to many different things, I yield.
Anything further? Twelve-five is discussion and vote to approve the second reading of the revived district handbook, can I get a motion to second?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion, Deb, please call the roll on twelve-five.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. Twelve-six is the second read and vote to approve the updated policies referred by the policy subcommittee and presented by Brian Lally, Human Resource Director, and Amy Braunhardt, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Go ahead, Brian. Motion to approve, I have a ho- oh, wait, I have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion, Mr. Lally.
Okay. Can I just ask one question first? Can you just articulate, what we have in our binder is the first one, public comment, does this reflect the, the changes from the last meeting?
Yeah, I can go through all that if you want. Please do.
You know what I'm saying, the one that we voted on, we had voted at one point to change something. This is up to date.
Yep.
Thank you, I yield.
So with policy, well, let me start with um, back in the October subcommittee meeting, the policy subcommittee meeting. I brought um, five policies forward to, to look at. Um, those are all here tonight, along with the bullying policy, um, that Dr. Braunhardt can speak to. But the five policies that I took, uh, those were from the MASC um, updates that, uh, they send out usually a few times a year. What I did was, as a starting point, I went back to the update from September twenty-twenty-three, and I'm going to just start going down that list for policy updates. So I took the first five to start with, that's what I brought to the subcommittee back in October. Um, and BEDD, uh, BEDH was one of them. The only change that um, MASC had proposed at that time, or, or uh, part of their uh, policy update, was on the second page, number four, they um, decided to strike or contains obscenities, so that was the MS, MASC uh, recommendation. Then if you go back to the top, we can kind of go through the other um, edits here. The third paragraph that struck out, that was what was voted on.
Hold on, Mr. Aguirre?
So MASC is a recommendation board, they don't tell everybody what to do, just for the record. So you're telling me that the only recommendation that they had was in number four, that should say, "A likely to provoke reaction and cause a breach of peace or incitement to imminent lawless conduct," where we had "or contains obscenities," and they want us to strike that?
That was the recommendation from the, the policy update from MASC, yes.
Does anybody else think that's ridiculous, because I do? I yield.
Ms. Pereira?
I think, I mean, I agree, I, I prefer not to, uh, or sworn at. But I think it becomes a legal thing, where if we prevent somebody, then we don't want to then get sued that we're violating somebody's civil rights. So if that's the case, I mean, whatever, I guess they allowed to swear at us, it's, I'd rather have that than the school department be sued, because somebody thinks they have the right to do that, I mean, the attorney maybe. So I agree with, I agree with uh, my colleague, but I think sometimes erring on the side of caution for the betterment. I, I'm thinking that's the reason.
Mr. Dias?
Hey, uh, Mr. Lally, before I ask questions, were you done with your presentation on BEDH, I'll, I'll?
I was just going to review what the, the changes are that you have and sort of how we came to this point.
I'm going to yield and let him finish his presentation.
Okay, glad.
Sure. Uh, so the, the first, uh, or, excuse me, the third paragraph that struck out, um, that was done as a vote at the last school committee meeting, um, that was approved, so that's why the, the change is here. Uh, if you then go down, still on the first page, number one, the vote, um, the change from um, the public comment sect- segment shall not exceed fifteen minutes. Uh, there was a vote taken at the subcommittee meeting to change that to thirty minutes, that was approved, so that's why that changes in here. Um, number two, the s- subcommittee had voted to change the um, time limit for speakers from three to five minutes. Then at the October school committee meeting, that was brought forth to a vote, and it got changed back to three minutes, so that you see those edits there. Um, also at the October school committee meeting, there was a motion made for the chair and vice chair to present some language, uh, relative to the thirty-minute time limit, and um, that was added as part three A. And then I already spoke about the only change that MASC um, suggested.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Dias?
Uh, yes, um, uh, well, a few um, questions, um, concerns, uh, uh, first of all, um, and just as I asked in the subcommittee, just um, so the public's aware, look, look, looking through this, um, we'd never consulted an attorney looking at this policy. Attorney aside or anyone?
I, I didn't, no.
Okay, um, secondly, I see a section that was added in here that basically quotes the city charter. I know we had extensive debate at the last meeting, I could be wrong, but I don't recall us taking a vote to add section nine dash eighteen of the charter within the policy.
Yeah, this, when we were at the last meeting, if you remember, Mr. Dias, um, I believe it was you or Mr. Aguirre, said, bring back some recommendations that you think will strengthen the policy. And I think having that clearly outlined in the policy, the city charter, um, kind of addresses some people's concerns about public input.
Okay, um.
And we just put it in verbatim, we didn't change anything.
Okay, um, so going back to, um, I know we had an extensive discussion on the quorum, so um, when I went, I went, went before the city council a few weeks ago, um, and I noticed during their citizens' inputs, and they run, and let me say, the council president does a good job at running his meet, not saying you don't, but I'm saying he does, he's very, he's very thorough. I think we can all agree with that, he's very thorough, um, and, yeah, and myself, and I saw other members of the public, they, the council engaged in questions right after, um, that was, um, that was done, and it was never an issue. Every, the issues were resolved, there was clarifying questions, it was great. So I, I don't think there's any issue with the quorum there, I think we should keep that section out, because it just creates um, an imbalance. Just, we had a committee member ask questions before, um, two members during citizens' input today, and just to congratulate them, and I, and I applaud that, I support that. And that's the way it should be, we shouldn't be restricted to not saying anything, especially, um, I know there's been some debate as to whether there was um, statements that are made, and some people questioned the accuracy of them. I don't think it hurts to have an open, honest discussion or to, to clarify. Now, going back to section nine dash eighteen of the city charter, um, it, it restricts public input at a special school committee meetings to items that are specifically on the agenda. So with that being said, um, I'd like to make a motion that-
There's a motion on the table already.
I'd like to make an am- all right, I'd like to make an amendment, um, that we add a section, section eight, um, that, to the citizens' input policy, that every special meeting agenda shall state that citizens' input shall, that citizens shall be able to speak on any item within the jurisdiction of the school committee.
The charter would control.
Yes, the charter would override that.
I, I, again, I would make the argument, i- i- if we put on an agenda item, we put in an agenda item that says citizens' input on a special, all this, all the city charter says that citizens' input must be within items of the agenda. If the agenda allows broad access for citizens to speak about within any item within the school committee, you're not violating the charter. Um, so I, I, I make my motion, um, so every citizen, is citizens' input, uh, states on the agenda that any citizen could speak within any item within the purview of the school committee. Um, it doesn't violate section nine dash eighteen, because it's, it's still an item on the agenda. We're just allowing just the public to be able to speak about any item within the school committee's authority. So that's my motion, I'll request a second.
Any second?
Question.
Mr. Aguirre?
The, uh, I understand my colleague's points, but the fall of a charter is poorly written. I think everybody will admit that, it's poorly written. It's actually contradictory towards what it says for a regular meeting versus a special meeting. Uh, I think the simple solution to that is that we have a motion at some point that we don't have any special meetings. All meetings of the school committee will be regular meetings, and it covers that issue. Um, that would be for a future vote. Relative to the request from the um, item one, where it said the thirty minutes, I recall, and just for the record, no, we have received not one piece of information from anybody, unless I missed it, that says this is the recommendation from the chair and the vice chair related to this. I've never seen an email, I've never seen anything related to that other than now. So the pe- the fact that this charter being inserted, I couldn't answer to that, because nobody's ever gotten it other than now. But the point of why we wanted to, um, ask for support was to say, at item one, where it said thirty minutes, the point was, they were going to adopt language that would allow for the rest of the citizen input at the end of the meeting. I don't think it had anything to do with the city charter language, because we had said, we want thirty minutes at the beginning of the meeting, three minutes each, that's ten people. If there's twenty people signed up, once we go through the minutes, at the end of the meeting, we have the rest. I thought, that's the only request that I had made personally to try to-
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that amendment, if you want to offer it, Mr. Aguirre.
So I think the part of the charter is, it's, it is what it is, I don't care whether it's in or it's not, that's, is what it is. But I do think that the part in the beginning that striked out, about public comments not a discussion, the mayor admitted and told, told us all that at that point, you could go back and forth and talk to somebody, he never shuts us down, so.
I don't have a problem with that, if you want to offer that as an amendment, I'll support you on that one, because we had talked about it at that meeting, that's not a problem.
So the three minutes, Mr. Lally is in, is, there's not scratched out, but on number two?
Yep.
It's back to three minutes.
By the way.
It's three minutes, you withdraw, okay. Okay, so, Mr. 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 Aguirre, he withdrew his amet- he withdrew-
So I, I think the only motion that needs to, the amendment that needs to be added is on item one, where it says all speakers are respectful comments in a respectful manner, we need to add, any additional uh, public's comments will be heard at the end of the agenda. I think that's the only missing piece.
I'll second that one, and I never second anything, no, I'm serious, I, I agree with you, I'm serious, we, we kicked it around, so thirty minutes before- Hold on, Mr. Aguirre, one question, is that waivable? If we have one speaker left, do you want to just let him have a rock?
I think it's always waivable, personally, it's always waivable by a vote of the committee. But where it says the public comments section shall not exceed thirty minutes, we're not saying we'll only listen for thirty minutes, it's thirty minutes at the beginning. At the end, everybody else will be able to be heard.
Got you, okay, so Mr. Aguirre has a motion to amend section one to allow thirty minutes at the beginning and finish the public input at the end as necessary.
At the end of the meeting, Mr. Jim?
At the end of the meeting, yep. I, I, um, someone else want to second it?
I'll second it.
There you go.
You can be on record to second it, it's okay.
I don't do it, but I'll do it with you. Because of you, Kevin, I'm supporting you, you know that, buddy.
Question on the amendment?
Go ahead.
Um, through you, to attorney aside, the only concern I have with that is going back to section nine dash eighteen, is there is a small part-
Wait, wait, hey, Dr. Jumpy, he's got a motion, we voted on, we want you, are you, we're going to vote on the thirty minutes, we'll go right back to you after we vote.
Right, it's on the amendment, we're literally on the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, glad, I'm sorry, I missed you.
It's okay, so we're moving around, so we're, everyone, after the thirty minutes, getting moved to the end of the agenda, yes. The only issue I have with that is um, within section nine dash eighteen, I don't know if it's in here, but there's language that um, discusses um, citizens' input must be scheduled at the convenience of the public. I don't know if moving some individuals to the end i- is violating that section.
No, no, many, many local city boards have the, a public input at the end right now. Yeah, it's very common, I think planning, I think zoning, they all, they all talk at the end. It's not, it's the time.
That could be very broad, too, though, right?
Yeah.
At the convenience of the public.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so as long as you provide them the opportunity, you're okay.
I don't know if I support it, but I understand, I yield.
All right, let's go on, Mr. Aguirre's amendment, Deb, please.
Can I just clarify, when, when we say end of meeting, are we talking about, like, before we go into executive session?
No, at the end of the meeting, when we come out.
When we come out?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further on this section?
Motion approved.
Motion to move.
I think it was already out there.
Okay, hang on, I have a motion to approve the whole thing, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second on that, Mr. Dias.
I believe we already had a motion and-
There was a motion and it was seconded, so I just-
No one seconded it, Mr. Dias.
No, I-
Ms. Pereira, I believe we made a motion earlier to approve the-
Correct. And her, and Mr. Aguirre, I'm seconded it.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it's, we'll be able to approve as a-
No, as amended, that's all, her, she made the motion, I amended it, like, so now it's just on the floor is her motion.
Give it a, give it a roll call, Deb.
Sure, oh, I had discussion on, still on the motion, it's okay. Again, as I said earlier, we've had individuals come here and speak bilingual. And, again, I think three minutes is just not enough, I'd like to make a motion that we increase citizens' input by thirty seconds.
There is a motion already on the-
I make an amendment to the motion that we increase citizens' input from three minutes to three minutes and thirty seconds.
Do we hold on, we got a motion on the floor.
Correct, and he wants to make an amendment.
He's amended it?
Another amendment.
Is there a second?
Can I say something?
No, is there a second on that one?
I'd just like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'll wait if any, okay. I agree with Mr. Dias, no offense, mayor, but you know what I noticed they do at city council? Is that before he gets to the three minutes, Mr. Kamara, President Kamara, will say-
Fifteen seconds.
You got thirty seconds, so it helps people, as opposed to here, we say you're done, and then they're trying to wrap it up.
Going forward, I will do that.
We can do that going forward, I think three minutes is fine, because I think they're prepared for three minutes.
You are correct.
But sometimes you get up and talk and, you know.
That will happen, yeah, my word.
Okay.
Go ahead, so on Mr., did we have a second on the motion?
I withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
You restate the motion.
No, he withdrew, he withdrew, he withdrew.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. All right, there's one public, now we have development and dissemination of procedures.
Oh, we're taking all, all separate, okay.
I guess that's where we are. Anybody have any discussion points on development and dissemination of procedures? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Aguirre.
Could you explain why this is, what's being taken out, it's been taken out?
So, that was part of the recommendation by M A S C. The update that I was looking at in September of twenty-three, what, what this did was it took two separate policies, C H A, which is the development of procedures, and C H C, which is procedures dissemination, combined them just to create one policy. But what I was looking at from the update from September twenty-three, it, it already had that section taken out, it wasn't included, so I believe that that part was struck in an earlier update. I don't know why M A S C recommended that, but that was just part of the recommendation in the update that I saw.
So, for the edification of the public, what we're striking out states, "It will be the responsibility of the superintendent to see that the procedures developed to implement committee policies and administer the school system are appropriately coded and included as procedures in the school committee's policy manual." I don't think we should get rid of that. That's part of the responsibility of the superintendent. So, you're telling me that that's getting struck, striked from the record, and, like, I just don't understand why that would be coded? And I really don't care what M A S C says, I'm not sure if you realize that, but as one member, I don't care what they say. But, somebody tell me why that should be striked from the record.
I withdraw my motion.
So, to answer your question, this wasn't my recommendation, I was tasked with bringing some policies forward to the, the subcommittee in October, and I thought a good starting point would be going back to December, excuse me, September twenty-three, when M A S C provides these updates. I'm presenting what M A S C recommended to the subcommittee, the subcommittee then approved this and brought it to the school committee.
I understand, sir.
I mean, I can speak to this, I think that, at present, the, the procedures that have been developed in support of our policies don't sit within the policy manual. They don't presently, I mean, our policy manual is policy after policy after policy, and not any of the procedures. So, I think this is just reflective of the work that we do now. That we don't code and include the procedures in the school committee's policy manual, they don't exist there now.
What's in the policy manual?
Policies.
I take this as, whose responsibility is it to make sure that the records are up to date and coded properly in our policy manuals? That's what I take this as.
But what it says is that, school committee policy, administer school system are appropriately coded, sorry, procedures developed to implement policies and administer the school system are appropriately coded and included as procedures in the school committee's policy manual. So, when we're developing a, when a policy gets approved, and we develop procedures, or there are procedures in place, we don't code them and place them in the manual, they don't, they're, they're not, the procedures themselves aren't necessarily finding themselves in that policy manual.
But they could be, and if they, if there's policy, there's policy made in various ways, via meetings, the like, votes, budgets, like, whatever. There's policies that are created and procedures that are created. I'm seeing this as, whose responsibility is it to make sure that they're coded properly? And that falls under the superintendent and full-time staff that work under you, HR director, secretary, whatever, that's how I'm reading this. Not about whether you have, like, school-building procedures, you know, that's not, that's not a policy. So, that obviously wouldn't go in a policy manual, like, we don't have a procedure-
But this literally says that the procedures, it says, "It will be the responsibility of the superintendent to see that the procedures developed to implement school committee policies and administer the school system are appropriately coded and included as procedures in the school committee's policy manual." So, at this point, it would, if, if this got approved with that language in it, and it, we did not strike it out, it would be, I'm not sure what that timeline would look like, but to develop a procedure and publish it as part of the policy manual, I, I mean, that's, I'm not even sure what kind of project that is.
But if you look at the top, look at the yellow, what they're recommending is the procedure. It talks about designing the detailed arrangements under which the school committee will be operated in accordance with the policy. So, it's contradictory, if what you're saying is true, then the whole thing needs to be reworded, because it's, it's the policies that are at the top that this is saying who's responsible.
I do believe that, I, I understand that the procedures, the way we carry out the, the policies in schools and across the district, I do agree that that is, that is the responsibility of the superintendent, I, I get that piece. It's that committing in writing the procedures associated with every single policy as part of that policy manual, I'm, yeah, I'm just not sure what that would look like most immediately.
Well, it's been in existence for-
No, I think that what Mr. Lally is saying is that it was, it's already striked, stricken? It's already stricken in our own policy.
I don't, that's not what I heard.
Oh.
No, 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 so-
Okay, I misunderstood.
So, the policy over the last three years, whatever, since, whenever he went to this, this is the policy that's existing. So, why it's x-ed out or lined out is because it's a current policy. So, if what you're saying is we haven't been following current policy, that's a whole other issue.
But I think that if we look at the policy manual, it's clear that the procedures for each policy are not in our policy manual currently.
So, we definitely have a quagmire. So, I would recommend we table this until next meeting, and you can work with Mr. Lally to get some clarification.
Okay.
That's all, we're, you're not making points that are not valid, just that right now, on the fly, we're trying to read it, and I think it needs, it's worthy of us taking another look at it, it's not gonna kill anybody for the month.
Did you make a motion, Mr.?
Table.
Second.
Have a motion to table it? Okay, Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
It's three.
Yeah, Mr. Dias.
When this was presented to the subcommittee, I was under the impression that this was just combining two policies into one. There was no substantive change to those policies, is that correct?
So, it was combining two policies into one, what I did was I took what M A S C suggested, which was this combination. When I looked at our two separate policies, C H A and C H C, our existing policy had that language from C H C that I struck out. The combination that M A S C presented in their September twenty-three newsletter didn't have that section. My guess is, in a previous update, prior to September twenty-three, they most likely gave an update to policy C H C that removed that section already, so when they were combining these two, that section was already out. I don't know when that recommendation was made by M A S C, I, like I said, I started with the September twenty-three newsletter as kind of where I was starting with.
So, they updated M A S C guidance, which I agree, Mr. Aguirre, we should be careful looking at, but that updated M A S C guidance had some differences within the policy than the previous guidance.
Not sure what you're asking.
So, we combined two policies.
Yes.
And, there is a difference within the guidance of M A S C now than there was previously, within the language, we just, you just said the certain section, I don't know the verbatim, but-
I'm not quite sure what you're getting at.
I think what he's saying is somebody dropped the ball in the past, if I'm being brutally honest. Somebody in the, in the past, when they combined them, should have striked this from the record, they didn't, now we got two policies still existing. That's the quagmire, that's why I asked to table it, because clearly, we need more information.
The, the combination of the two policies was from the September twenty-three update. Prior to that, what I think happened was M A S C most likely, before those policies were combined, I'm guessing that they made an update that suggested that language be struck from C H C. That never took place here in Fall River, so I included this as struck in language in the policy that was presented to the subcommittee.
Do I start off before, Mr.?
He's answering a question.
Sorry, I thought you was-
Hang on.
Done.
You well sent?
I was only trying to make a clarification.
I'll make a motion that we refer this back to policy subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion, Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Next one, refer it back, is the bullying prevention policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve that policy, any discussion?
Second.
I have a motion to second, Deb, call the roll on bullying.
Mr. Chairman, just, do we have the one page I'd like for this, for this, what has changed?
So, it was just, what do I do with that now?
Who had your sheet?
So, on the summary page, it just referenced that it had been, it referenced where in the handbook, oh, no, I'm sorry, the policy, wrong one, I don't have a sheet for that.
Are these technical changes?
The timeline is there, and then if you flip to page two, it's a running document, if you flip to page two of what I provided, you'll see the changes as, as proposed by the committee, and then it goes section by section if a change was in there.
I'm just trying to find it in what we, what we received.
So, I think that Dr. Braunhardt did that in the first-
The first read?
Well, in, there's a table.
I think you have it in your hand right now, the chart, that starts with the timeline, page two.
The documentation of the changes.
Page two begins the individual sections.
Okay, and is it technical changes, or is this, is there anything substantive with these changes, or the more like procedural notices, like?
Yes, and some changes as it relates to increased training for staff, there was a request, you know, there was the committee that decided we wanted to have additional training for staff, so rather than just doing the bullying training at the beginning of the school year, there's a system to refresh that training at the mid-year, so that all staff are reminded of their role as it relates to being a mandated reporter and reporting things, as it relates. In addition to that, the definitions section was moved. The only biggest change is the request for reconsideration, the original policy had a team for a request for reconsideration, and after consulting with our attorney, he, and they recommended that that be removed, that is not part of the DESI recommended intervention plan template. And after looking at the way that it has played out, or lacked that of, our legal opinion was saw and recommended based on the committee's review and those recommendations.
So, part four A is a question on, I don't know if this is a total new language, but it basically says about who can report, where it gets reported to? What parts of that were changed?
Language updated to include administrative positions as potential aggressors. So, if you notice that second column, that's the rationale for change that I listed.
Oh, so that's not the language, there's more language in that section?
Correct, the language is over on the right, the farthest right, and then you can dig into the policy for the further, but that was, that was the change that was made, and that was the rationale on that side.
Yeah, so, my only concern with that is, in the past, we had a situation where superintendent was accused of bullying, and it never came to the school committee, so, I don't know if this is helping that situation, or is this further circumventing it, but it says, "Order the school committee or designate when the superintendent is the alleged aggressor," so, I don't know if this language is covering that.
That's the new language, that's the updated language, to be inclusive of that.
And does anybody have an opinion of whether that covers the situation that? The school committee will get no, we'd have got no notice that anything was going on, even though people had filed complaints against the superintendent. We didn't know about that for six, eight weeks, we found out just by happenstance, so, part of it is that if somebody has a, if, we're over the superintendent, they should, we should have a say. And I'm not sure if, I'm assuming that that's what that means, but it's a summary.
Right, so this suggests that a staff member will report immediately to the school committee or designate when the superintendent is the alleged aggressor. So, I, I don't know what else-
The summary, I'm just saying the summary says that, I just don't know what else is in there.
No, that is the language, that's the excerpt of the language that has been corrected.
So, that's the whole language, it's not something that we're missing if we didn't click the button to look into the-
Correct.
Into the whole policy. I think that's important to put in, I think that's a good change. Is there anything else related to any cost to the district by any of the language? Further, like the parts about further counseling and all that stuff that isn't gonna cost?
Nope.
Thank you, I yield.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, Deb, call the roll on bullying.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve seven is the second read and a vote to approve the new policies referred by the policy subcommittee and presented by Brian Lally. Any discussion on any of those three policies?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a-
Are we taking all three?
Yeah, we'll take all three at once, if no one says anything, it's fine with me, but I have a motion and a second, discussion, Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee? Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eight is a discussion and vote to approve the appointment of a legislative representative pursuant to policy three as presented by Tracy Curly, Superintendent of Schools.
Yes, so I'm just bringing forth a request to visit-
Yes, so I'm just bringing forth a request to visit Policy BJ, School Committee Legislative Program, and specifically, number three in that policy. The committee will annually designate a person who may or may not be a member of the committee to serve as its legislative representative. This person will be authorized to speak on the committee's behalf with respect to legislation being considered by the Massachusetts Legislature or the United States Congress or their respective committees. In all dealings with individual elected representatives, the legislature or Congress, the committee's representative will be bound by the official positions taken by the school committee, and so I bring this forward, asking the committee to appoint a legislative representative.
Motion to approve and appoint Colin Dias.
Second.
Okay, I was gonna, since I was gonna nominate myself for that position, but we already have a motion, a second, so let's vote. Go ahead, Ms., Deb.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No, that's fine. Number twelve nine is a discussion and vote to approve the revised superintendent's timeline as presented by Shelley Pereira, Chair of the Evaluation Subcommittee.
All right, so the internet's not my friend right now. I can't see the document I pulled up before I had to use the ladies' room, but we're looking at adjusting the timeline to get us back into what we should be doing, which is obviously yearly evaluations. The superintendent clearly was hired in July, so we were looking to get this, hopefully, if everybody is good or we make changes, hopefully, this gets approved today, and we can go forward. So, the next thing on the agenda is the process. This is the timeline, but we also looked at streamlining the evaluation tool for this particular evaluation. Also, at this time, requesting that the superintendent set her goals, which we will then use to evaluate her next year in November, to be back on track to where we should be. So, we're asking, basically, the Subcommittee is asking that we approve this timeline today so that we can move forward with the evaluation process, so that at our January meeting, I will be able to present the evaluation that we've, I've already received from the rest of the committee. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Any discussion on that part of it? The timeline. Mr. Dias?
Yes, and I was with Ms. Pereira. We were the two who were at that meeting, and I think it's the best we got under the circumstances. The only question, and I'm gonna support to approve the timeline, because it's the best one we have. My question would be, and just going forward, whenever we get a new superintendent, do we need, is it practice to go through Evaluation Subcommittee to get the date of the goal-setting meeting, or is that just something that's just set outside of evaluation? I ask that question to anyone who knows the answer.
I think the Evaluation Subcommittee can rule that kind of timeline if it's practical for everybody here, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see any problem with it. Mr. Agnew?
My opinion of that is no. So, superintendent, whoever it is, gets hired, the superintendent should be setting goals based on the superintendent being the superintendent, not waiting for the evaluation tool in order to do the goals. Now, those goals would then be implemented in part of the, once they're approved, part of the evaluation tool, but I don't think we should be waiting for this superintendent or the next superintendent to say, "Let's wait to do the goals." Personally, I don't think those two things go together.
I don't, I'm with you there, Mr. Agnew, because I don't think that happens. I think when you hire a superintendent here or anywhere in the state, they start thinking about the goals they want to do for the district the day they're hired, I'm hoping. Whether it's pen to paper on the timeline is almost an after effect. The only reason this is changed at all is because it was compressed because of the date of the hire, but I gotta believe, unless I'm wrong, that during the interviews, all the candidates were thinking about, after looking at the data, goals they'd like to do to improve the city of Fall River's public school system.
Right, the problem is that we are here now, and we don't have the superintendent's goals still. That's part of the problem.
I think they're coming.
I know, but it's already December, so my only point saying it is, we missed that vote already. We can't go backwards. Superintendent gets hired July one, we should have things in place.
Yeah.
You know, give some time, have an entry plan. We just got last month, a couple of weeks ago, the entry plan. That whole timeline should have been way earlier, in my opinion, and then say, "Here's my goals for my first year." That needs to happen, whether it's, it's always gonna happen if we get superintendent starting July one. So, the question was, is the goal-setting meeting separate? I think the goal-setting meeting should be done outside of the evaluation tool. In this case, we probably have no other choice, because now we're gonna give it some time.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on this timeline?
No, I don't have one.
Oh, we don't have, we don't have anything?
A motion to approve.
We got a motion, we have a second, then I'll go to Mr., I have a motion and a second, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. So, the goal, so this is a yearly, you would be setting goals yearly?
Yes.
Okay, so the goals that you are going to present to us next month, and if I knew we could have went outside eval, I would have recommended that we even had this meeting, goal-setting meeting today, outside of our meeting, but it's okay going forward, we know. So, the goals that you have set, that you're going to present to us next month, are they gonna cover until next November, or are they gonna cover until July when you were hired? Because of yearly goals, but I don't know if you're gonna maybe just have goals set for July, then set from July on, July to July for next year, or are you just gonna every single year present your goals now in November?
I am, I think it makes sense to submit annual goals. I think the difficult part is, as part of a general, generally speaking, with an evaluation system, part of the goal-setting might be based on some feedback from, from the committee or, you know, for teachers, their principal, whoever's evaluating them. And so, I think that people go through an evaluation process, they set goals as a baseline, they go through an evaluation process, and then based on some of the feedback, based on some additional data, they'll set new goals. The way the rhythm works here, I guess with the superintendent, is that that's not a thing. I can submit goals, I can, I can, I can offer you my goals. I could do that now. My impression has always been that there is a goal-setting meeting that follows the evaluation, and so I think that's where the confusion is, and if we can fix that timeline and have it make sense, I'm all for it.
Right, I guess, so I think you answered my question. So, the goals you submit, you're going to submit in November at the goal-setting meeting, you're gonna want to cover the whole year until November of twenty-five?
No, I don't think that works. I mean, I think we should just go through June, and then I will set some new goals in the new...
In July.
In July. I think that's what makes sense.
Okay, so we can go back maybe as eval, or we just start, if it's separate from eval, then we'll start from scratch, so your goals that you will submit next November will be until July first.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the goals that you'll see are, they're, they're goals that are aligned to a, there's gonna be alignment with the entry plan that you saw, and I think that the goals are going to make sense for our first-year superintendent.
Ayew, thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second on the timeline?
Motion, so may?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb call the roll on, on twelve nine.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve ten is a discussion and vote to approve the modified superintendent's evaluation tool as presented by Shelley Pereira, Chair of the Evaluation Subcommittee.
So, again, this, we looked at the evaluation tool that, you know, that we've used in the past, and we streamlined it to make it be more efficient and make more sense to what we're able to evaluate in such a short period of time. So, me and Mr. Dias consulted with the superintendent as well as ourselves, and what you have in front of you, and what we decided to do, instead of completing an entire new tool, wanted to make sure that it was legally acceptable to do, but instead of developing a whole tool, what we decided that would be more efficient is just to make certain sections not applicable, so sort of cross them out, not applicable, and then we will be responsible to evaluate the portions of the evaluation tool that remain there. And the reason that they're not applicable is because she hasn't had enough time to achieve those goals or earn many of them. They were things that haven't occurred yet. If Mr. Dias wants to add?
Mr. Corey? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you done, Ms. Pere?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Corey?
I was just, I was making a motion, let's go.
I think we already made a motion.
Well, I don't believe we have a motion.
We didn't, okay, Mr. Corey made a motion, I have a second.
Second, what a comment.
Mr. Dias?
Just so, and Ms. Pereira's right, just so the committee's aware, so we went through the DESI evaluation tool. We took out certain sections that we just believed were obviously just, you couldn't complete an evaluation in a short amount of time on those certain sections, or we just felt like they were just adequate. And for sections that we had some debate on, whether you can make and evaluate some of these items or not, there was some debate and discussion, so to make it fair, we added a section at the end that says "not applicable." So, certain school committee members, if they feel like they can't evaluate certain things, they can place "not applicable," and then we, there could be a difference of opinion, so it'll be up to the individual school committee members in that tool, so everyone can, you know, get everything they want, and, yeah. Ayew.
Okay, anything, Mr. Agnew?
The only thing I would recommend changing is the section at the bottom of each where it says comments. It says it's for needs improvement or exemplary comments are required, or whatever. I think comments should be required from all committee members in each one, because what that does is it cheapens the process, so go through and check boxes, check boxes, and don't give a comment, good, bad, or indifferent. It should just say, "Comments are required for all sections." I think there's four sections in a summary. We should be able to make a comment. Doesn't say what, one sentence, five sentences, but the way I've looked at this in the past is we see some members just don't want to spend the time to do it, and they just start checking boxes. So, I'd like to make that an amendment, that all sections have comments.
I'll second that amendment. Deb.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second on, what is it, must write a comment?
Just comments. Right now, it delineates only if you're, so if you're proficient, that you don't have to put a comment. I want it to be, everyone has a comment on each section.
All right, we have a motion, a second on commenting on the eval. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Now, on the motion to discuss and approve the modified evaluation tool, do we have a motion, we have a motion, a second for Mr. Dias. Ms. Pere, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thirteen is obviously informational, retirements, appointments, regretfully, some people passed away, resignations. Can I get a motion, a second on those?
Motion to a second, please, on file.
I have a motion, a second. Deb call the roll on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agnew?
Just a comment on these. So, I've been asking for several months to have a section in here about when somebody moves, so I appreciate the superintendent added that this month. It's listed under rehires, so you would see when somebody gets appointed to a different position or comes back to the district, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. And all of these positions that are teaching positions are, that are recommended by the directors, goes without saying. Correct?
Are the transfers recommended?
No, so if somebody's being on here as a hire, the process is they're recommended by the director and then approved by you before they go in here.
All the new hires?
Yes, when you say directors, I'm just...
A boss, a principal, a director, something like that. It's not just a willy-nilly process. Somebody goes through, the director interviews, recommends to you, and you hire. Sometimes people think that...
Yes.
Things just happen with nobody doing that work. I just want to clarify for the public. Thank you.
All right, can we get a roll call on that, Deb, please?
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Mr. Assad, sat there patiently all night. Is there a reason to go into executive session?
Yes, there would be, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, our new business?
Oh, did I miss it? New business, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Dias, he's right, fourteen.
I don't have any new business, I just wanted to go ahead.
You're scaring me. You are scaring me. All right, no new business, let's go to number fifteen with Mr., thank you for pointing out, Mr. Dias, I completely missed it. I thought you had a list. Go ahead, Mr. Assad.
Okay. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes for October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, regular school committee meeting. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes for October twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four, grievance Subcommittee meeting. National Laws... Yeah. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing grievances relative to all professional teaching employees of the forward school system, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the forward school system, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the forward school system, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the forward school system, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security employees of the forward school system, represented by the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the forward school system, represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, including hearing grievances relative to all paraprofessional employees of the, of the forward school system, represented by the Forward Federation of Paraprofessionals, the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining and litigating position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy session preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Joshua Fertado, Director of Maintenance. We will reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
Question?
Wait, one second. Sure, don't mind. Are you done, Mr. Assad?
Yeah.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Just a quick question, and just something I noticed, because I just don't want this to bite us back in the future. So, the third section with FREA is relevant to grievances, correct? That has nothing to do with collective bargaining? Because, am I, am I right? Um, the, um, the section, the third one. Does that just cover just grievances, or does that cover our collective bargaining? Every, okay. Ayo, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Can I get a motion and a second on going into executive session?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Pere?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, in recess, executive session.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Present.
Ms. Larve? Pereira?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Do we have anything further to come before the committee?
We do.
Mr. Dias, he's got to do the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from October 21, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, second. Deb, call the roll on the minutes, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from October 29, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion, second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?